Jono, you're muted.
Yeah.
Thank you. Judy's gave me the clue. Thank you all. I just want to call this June 19th special meeting of the Albemarle County School Board to order. And we are scheduled to go through until 1:00. We have two major topics for this morning. And the first is the return to school plan, the draft. And I think that's going to be extremely important for all of us because not only does this give us a chance to kind of drill down, but it also can impact decisions that we make regarding the school calendar. And so I think this is going to be of great value. And then the second session, I will probably take a break in between, will be on SROs. And I'm very much looking forward to that. I got the printout that everybody got in the email last night and just printed it off. So I'll be kind of looking at that as we go. You know, one thing that I would like to note is that I am sorry that Dr. King can't be with us today. We hope that he recovers quickly and that he can be part of our discussion next week. I know that Ms. Gellner, probably Dr. Haas and others will be able to fill in, you know, for Dr. King. But I think his voice is a really important one to this discussion. So with that, it is truly my pleasure to turn this over to Allison Lenny. Allison, we're glad you're with us again and look forward to today and take it away.
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. By the way, I don't know if, I mean Bernard, you look stunning, may I just say? I mean, I'm still going to facilitate this thing like I did in the olden times, right, everybody? We're going to have fun?
Yes, indeed. And Bernard, it's a curse. We know it's a curse.
Yeah, right. Please.
Good. Well, thank you very much for having me. My name is Allison Lenny. I'm the president of Allison Partners and do quite a bit of public facilitation of meetings. And I have been watching your meetings since the beginning and just wanted to say how incredibly impressed I am by how you all are managing this time and the kind of engagement that you're having. And so it's a true pleasure. I think I've been working with you all for about five or six years in different forms or fashions. So it's just a delight to be back and to help you have this conversation. So, you know, I watched yesterday's meeting as Jono told everyone. And one of the things that is on my mind is that I know you have this incredible document that the staff has put together. I also know we've got the staff available to us as we want to have them in the engagement of our conversation. And so what I wanted to propose and what Jono recommended is, you know, really, what do we want to accomplish? So I'd actually like to set a few objectives with the school board for this portion of the conversation. So my general goal is to take about two hours to help us talk about the fall and the back to school process, and then save about two hours for the SRO. Jono, have I got that right?
You do. And if I could just interrupt for one second, I missed one step that we need to do.
Okay.
And that is, I need a motion, please, to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move the agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Thompson, would you please?
Dr. Acov? Yes. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
And Chairman Al Carroll?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for that. I'm sorry about that interruption, Allison.
No problem.
Mr. Chair, if you could also read the language that we start all meetings with at this time?
I will get that. And as we come to a stopping point, I will read it. That's downstairs. I'll be right back.
Thank you, sir.
So Ross, is that? Ask you out, Allison, could you wipe your, maybe the lens down? Your image is somewhat fuzzy to me. I don't know if it is to anybody else or not.
Okay, looks pretty clear to me, but that's, everyone, you feeling okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so let's proceed. Where I'd like to begin is we're starting with the back to school plan, okay? So we are taking a look at that document. And I think the four sections set us up pretty well in terms of being able to say that's about the chunks of time that we'd like to have. A couple of other ground rules that I want to tell you, I remember from last time, was that your preference is that we stay as a whole group, that we not do as much breaking into breakout rooms. Everybody give me a thumbs up on that if that's definitely where we still are. At the same time, if at any point it seems like it would be useful to break into pairs to talk, we can do that as well. I have the breakout room functionality that we can use as we proceed, okay? So I think part of what we'd like to do, I watched yesterday's presentation. I understand who are the different leadership sponsors within the staff in terms of the different sections. And I think we're well off to start with healthy environments and have a robust discussion about that. But I'm also open to just pausing for a moment, see if anybody wants to come off mute and say anything sort of overarching, if you feel that I'm diving in too quickly.
Allison, I would just like to say I have the document ready to share at any point. So if there's anything that the board would like to look at as they're asking questions or talking about it, we can bring the document up and take a look at that.
Okay, so you mean the actual full PDF?
Yes.
Great.
We also have the co-facilitators here, Michelle, Jay, Claire and Roslyn, that will speak to each different section.
Great.
And what I would say is, early this morning, I did send out my remarks that I made to the leadership team to frame up a perspective on the return to school plan. So I didn't want to take up time during your retreat to read that to you, but I did want you to see what I shared with the leadership team.
Wonderful. I enjoyed reading that as well. And I think that is a nice reminder to let's pause and say happy Juneteenth to everyone and celebrate that we're getting to have our retreat on that day. And if anybody wants to join me, I'll be at the 6:00 PM celebration at the Jefferson School. And by at, I mean I'll be on Facebook. And you're welcome to join me if we want to all go together. COVID jokes? Not good? No? Haha. Thanks, Katrina. Appreciate it. By the way, I've been loving your giraffe for all the meetings. I don't know what the story is, but I want to know one day. Okay. So with that being said, does anybody else have anything in terms of an overarching topic relative to something they want to say before we go into specific sections? And I'll just pause and let people come off of mute. That's kind of how I'll handle it. Okay, I'm going to take that as affirmation that we should jump right into healthy environments. So let's think a little bit about what we want to accomplish in the discussion of this section. Perhaps we start with, does anybody have any clarifying questions? Anything they read in there that they'd like to make sure they understand before we have a discussion? Well, Deborah, you might be able to take that as a sign that it is incredibly clear that there are not questions about the first section, but I don't want to, you know, make too many assumptions. Okay. Do people want to share a reaction or a concern?
I'd like to do that.
Thank you.
So we, this was something that I was thinking about, and we also got an email about this last night, about the ventilation concerns. It's mentioned in the statement of, the areas of focus, but I don't really see a lot of discussion about, you know, the problems with recycling air that can carry the virus. And then also I had a question about hand washing in terms of how frequent it's being done. I watched the EAB webinar about best practices for returning to school, and they suggested doing hourly hand washing. And I don't see that in here, just entering and exiting rooms. And I don't know how often our particularly elementary school children who are in the same classroom all day will be entering and exiting. So I just wanted some clarification on that and a suggestion of a more stringent policy.
Roslyn, would you like to comment?
Hi, good morning. Can you clarify the ventilation? You just went more specifics on it or just, can you just clarify the comment on the ventilation? Because I agree of the importance of ventilation, that we will use both our systems to do that. As you know, our mechanical systems can flush in and out fresh air, but also through use of opening windows. So are you looking for more specifics on that or just sharing that as a point of emphasis?
I would say both because, I mean, I think we've all read the study about the restaurant where people were further than six feet away, but in a certain direction where the air was flowing, they were becoming, getting COVID. So yeah, both.
Yep. So the bullet we have in the document is we will improve indoor air quality by increasing outdoor ventilation. So that's our guiding statement. And then we do have more work on how do we achieve that? And how do we set the expectations both for our energy management system, which can automatically control that, but also our expectations of teachers of when and when not it's appropriate to open windows? So again, I think we have the overarching statement that we are striving to improve ventilation, but we need to fill in the details of how to make that happen.
So I would not feel comfortable bringing kids back to school until we had that crystal clear.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I think that again goes about the purpose of this document versus that there will be a series, just one example for ventilation. There'll be a series of standing, standard operating procedures that will be well documented before we ever open school. Again, this is supposed, this document is intended to be the overarching kind of guide guy. And then there'll be a whole lot more specifics provided on many topics, including that one.
So that goes along with what Ms. Collins said yesterday about this being a guide as opposed to a playbook. And so some things will be filled in.
We anticipating filling in a lot of things. So that's a statement that says this is something we need to tend to, and we need to have standard operating procedures around. So that's the way to think and look at this. We will, again, come back with all those details for each and every one of these we will statements, how we will do that.
So then in terms of this retreat, what is it, I guess, what will we accomplish with this discussion?
Well, Roslyn, let me, I'll take a stab at it and then maybe you can help me out. So Judy, my sense was that those are the very kinds of questions that they would like to hear, that speak to you, that say where you want more. There may be times where they're able to say, yes, that's definitely the plan. Or, oh my gosh, you're right, we don't have that on our radar. So that's exactly the kind of thing that we're looking for. We didn't know exactly how much time to allot for that. So it could be that our discussion here is shorter than we imagined, but you've given the staff places where based on your knowledge and expertise, you'd like them to dive. And we are very nimble right now. It could be that we need to call another meeting in order to have the deeper dive discussion that has the answers to those questions. That's my understanding, Deborah and Roslyn. I'd love your help.
Absolutely. We will be coming back in series of more information. For example, when you look at, I think, healthy students and talk about schedules, we'll come back with a more detailed schedules as we go through the summer before we start school. This is our, again, our beginning document to make sure that we are considering all the things we consider. For instance, if we didn't have ventilation in here, that, I mean, that's what we're trying to think about. What are the key pieces that we need to make sure that we're addressing and planning around? But that's, I mean, it's a great statement. I think it is when somebody reads this. If it wasn't clear enough that that's important to us, we need to add some language around that to make sure that that stands out.
Judy, does that feel right, like kind of what you thought? Will that work?
Um, I think it will depend on how the rest of these series of discussions go. I'll hold judgment on that.
Okay, great. Roslyn, anything you want to add? I'm just going to give Roslyn a chance to make sure we framed it up right, and then Kate, I'll get you. Roslyn, anything? We're good, Roslyn?
We're good. I'm freezing up a little bit, so I'm hearing pieces of it.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Kate.
I have a question about the transportation and just whether the outlined, whether we have the capacity to actually do this. I mean, this is talking about, I mean, I've ridden on a couple of school buses on the first day of school to Greer, and there's like three kids on a seat all the way across, and that's double, you know. I don't know if we have enough buses or drivers in the fleet to get all the kids who may want to go. Even if you divide that in two, if you're talking about every other seat staggered across the aisle, how do we get our kids there?
Yeah. So we, you know, I operate a couple of departments that we consider ourselves support departments. And we love for instruction to drive the ship. But unfortunately, on this case, transportation is going to be a huge limiting factor about driving our schedule. And so you're right, our buses right now are fully at capacity, two to three to a seat. We know we have a limited set of both physical resources and human resources. So we are sharpening the pencil and just being very creative in all of our transportation pieces of it to give instruction as many opportunities to develop a viable schedule. So I just, I don't, it's one of those non-answers right now. We are working on it. We do know that we will be able to deliver students safely, and it will be a layering of mitigation strategies, both from seating kids one per seat, considering the use of masks, ventilation, what's the best way to ventilate a bus? We've had a lot of conversations with different organizations in the health department. We're working hard on that topic because you hit the nail on the head. It's going to be our most challenging piece.
Do we have, we have buses or assistants on every bus? I mean, just in terms of managing the kids in a different kind of regime of sitting every other seat and with masks and not horsing around?
I mean, we do not currently, a lot of our special education buses, depending on the needs of the students, have an assistant. But our regular buses do not currently.
And if you remember, one of the steps we were going to take is send out a survey to parents around the transportation piece. We do have a lot, many parents that drive their children to school already. And if we, if parents feel like that's something that they can do, that can help us bring more children to school, quite frankly. So trying to get a handle on, one, will you allow your child to ride to school? Because that will be the most, the closest they will be in a closed situation. And two, if you could, would you bring your, could you drive your child to school? One of the things we know is that, as we start looking at numbers, if the numbers change, it gives us different opportunities to have more children in more buildings every day.
There's a, there's a certain irony in the fact that earlier in the year, we were having an argument about discouraging, discouraging parents from driving their children and from discouraging students from driving themselves. And now we're sort of in the position of, well, gee, could you please drive your kids? Could you please drive yourself? I just think that's an interesting change. But the one thing I want to put out there that I don't want to, it's not something we need to fixate on, but I want it, I want it considered just for the future. And I guess it's mostly towards Roslyn. If we're putting a lot more miles on the buses, that's going to impact our bus turnover. That's going to be a capital improvement issue. Just want to put that out there because if we're running the buses twice as much as we typically do, that's going to put a lot of miles on it.
I agree. But I would comment, we're not going to be running the buses twice as much because then we would be having twice as much drivers and hours, and so that's not feasible. I would comment, we are going to have a lot more deadhead miles. It's, we are putting miles. I just want it's not in the sense that we're going to run the bus twice as much, but we will anticipate losing a lot of efficiencies.
Also, I guess, Roslyn, I'm assuming that, well, never mind, never mind.
What will be the capacity of the buses? If we go with the staggered seats and all of that, how many people would the buses be able to hold at a time?
So I want to clarify, we are still reviewing guidance and debating what our options are. So I, and actually, that's probably, this planning guide is a draft, and that's probably something we'll revise to be a little less specific because we still have a lot of guidance to weed through. But if we sat one child every other seat, that would reduce a 77 passenger bus to about 12. If we sat a child every seat, one per seat, it would be about, it would be 24. We know we have buses that range from a capacity of 55 to 77, but we also know siblings can sit together. And so we're using scenarios that either average 12 or average 24. So those are all averages.
I just received a text from somebody asking, and this would relate to all four of the sections, is do we feel confident that we have enough staff to be able to do all of the, all of the things that are in this and the other sections in terms of cleaning, in terms of doing it throughout the day? Will we consider, will we consider hiring outside groups? And I, this person who I know is not looking for work, but consider hiring outside people to, or services to be able to cover some of the items that we're talking about? That's a broad question. That's not a specific question.
So if I could comment just on the cleaning piece of it and our custodial thing? So there's a couple, again, I preference, preface this all with, these are our initial thoughts on it all. A couple of things. First is we would obviously, our custodians do other things other than clean. They're moving things and other work orders. And so the first step is to prioritize that their main focus would be cleaning and disinfection. And so there may be some decreased service levels of other things. So that's the first. The second is we have both daytime and evening custodians. And so we can do some labor, some shifting around to better support in the daytime for more frequent cleaning. And the last piece I'll add is we are looking at schedules that would, may or may not have every school in the building at the same time. And so for instance, so that allows us to double up more or less custodial staff at one school while another school's not there. So we would obviously exhaust all our internal things. We're not, I'm not seeing a need for external yet, but if we get there, we would obviously pursue that.
Let me check in for a second and make sure that things are going in the direction that you all feel are the way you want this conversation to go. I think that it's really totally understandable for you all to want to, you know, just kind of dig your teeth in and get some specifics and things, and also say places where you feel things, especially where things are missing. I think we're also learning that there's a lot more to come and a lot more for you to get to react to. So when you looked at the section overall, I also have a question about whether it's this section or the whole guide, was there anything you were thinking, wow, what about this or that? Or I would have thought for sure there was going to be a section on this or that. I just want to make sure I'm both giving you the chance to talk about the level of specificity and give feedback, but also thinking about sort of, if there's something overarching, we should be discussing as well. So I could use some, before we dive too far into the detail, I could use some feedback on where you want the discussion to be.
I had a question, and maybe I missed it, but what about taking temperatures? At the beginning of the school day or getting on the bus, have we considered that?
Would that be in the section?
That would be the section on healthy staff.
I saw it for the staff.
Healthy students. I think there's Mr. Thomas or whoever wants to. I think we, I think all of the different groups actually had this conversation. We had to push it to one or several. So I think healthy staff and healthy students might be the group to tackle it first.
I'll talk about the staff part of it. One of the things that we are asking our staff to do is to do, we're asking them to do a self-assessment. So at this point, while we did talk about the ability or the feasibility to take people's temperatures every day as they came into work, what we decided to do was create a document that has an employee self-assessment. And in that, we're asking them to take their temperature at home. We are asking them, we have a list of symptoms that they can go through a checklist of, do they have or do they not have it? And also we asked them a question about travel as well. And if they say yes to any of those answers, and if they have an elevated temperature, we are asking them to stay home. But it is a self-reported self-assessment.
What thought process was, why did we land on not doing the temperature for students? Just because I've heard that being a standard and other things, like I think I, well, now I really don't know. But like Disney World, I think is taking temperatures when people. I'm talking about this, my son brings us our thermometer, like.
They're doing it, when I get, when I get to the swimming pool, ACAC, they take your temperature as you're checking in. And if your temperature's too high, you have to leave.
Same with the hospital.
We actually talked to the health department about that to get some questions around that. And Roslyn, do you want to talk a little bit more about what you heard there?
Sure. And Jake can, I know his group specifically talked, so he can expand. So we, there are some pretty significant logistical challenges of taking temperatures. So we were debating that versus what are we, what's the benefit of doing it? So there are some concerns around, we know that fever is not often the symptom presented in kids. Debbie, I think that's probably what they said. And our some health officials often say that they'll spike the fever later in the day, not first thing in the morning. And then concerns about the accuracy of the infrared thermometer. So we know that taking temperatures may people feel better, and it's a very visual thing. But we don't know the effect, you know, how much we're actually achieving by doing that. And then counter to that, you have a lot of logistical challenges. By taking the temperature at the front door, you have now gathered people, which is what you don't want to do. And then if you take temperatures as they get on the bus, let's take the scenario. Okay, so you have a kid that does have a fever at the bus stop. What do you do? Do you leave them at the bus stop? And so we just have decided that we want to educate and promote that self-screening, and we will support and train our families in doing that.
Mr. Thomas, would you like to add anything?
Sure. So what I would add is, as we continue to, I mean, so everything that everyone said, I echo as well. And the only thing I think I would add to it is, as we continue to evolve what our schools are going to look like and our practice with clubs and so on and so forth, we're really, you know, the terminology we've been using is developing a partnership with our families and helping to educate them on things that we're doing and things that they could be doing as well as part of that self-checklist. So normally, in every school year, your athletic teams come back well before your students. So one of the things I've been doing is working with our athletic directors, our Amy Boyer, who's our representative from ACAC, and our athletic trainers, looking at the National Athletic Association norms, National High School Athletic Association norms, and local information that's been coming out from both CDC and VHSO, and putting together procedures on what practices may look like if we're able to get to that point. One of the things that we would do is maybe on the first time that a student came to a practice, we would actually go through the self-check with them, actually take their temperature the very first time to show them and guide them through what a self-check would look like, what kind of questions they should be asking themselves, and what to do if they are worried about a cough or the different symptoms that may present themselves. if they are symptomatic. So that's kind of the conversations we're having right now around students. And especially, you know, if, if, if something starts to happen with any kind of athletic gatherings before school starts with students.
I have a broader level question and how do we communicate all of this to parents? I mean, at the end of the last school year, the number of emails was just overwhelming. And the, the content, the, just all the stuff we want parents to absorb. How are we going to strategically do that so that we don't overwhelm parents?
One of the things we've talked about is creating a parent guide to return to school so that it is in one place. And of course it'd be translated, et cetera, but that that might be very helpful to parents. It with all these different categories about what, what we're doing and what the expectations are. One of the things we also know is we're going to spend some time with, with students, making sure that they, that we model and that we, they understand the importance of this, their, their health in, in coming to school. So we know that that's a, a big part of what we need to think about and do. And as I think Rosal or Jay said, we really have to develop this close partnership, perhaps closer and more connected than we've ever been with our parents in regards to making sure that our community is healthy. I mean, that's the other piece is school's a big part of the community. And if school's healthy, then the community can be healthy and vice versa. So you're exactly right. The communication is important and it not being as often as we did it in the spring.
And hey guys, this is Pat. Debbie, if I could jump in real quick, I would just want to echo that, that, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of the COVID-19 survey results that we just sent to you yesterday are around communication. And so we're really digging into that to learn what we did right with communications, what we could do better with communications and developing a strong plan moving forward.
So let me, I want to take a timeout for a second and see if there's any other school board member who hasn't spoken yet that would like to.
Well, I've spoken, but I haven't, another, the last.
Give me one second, Kate. Let me just see if I see anybody else. Dave, you good? Graham, good? Great. Okay. Go ahead, Kate.
The last section on healthy environments talks about the response to confirmed cases of COVID. I guess. This needs a lot more detail clearly and, and well, and I don't know a short-term dismissal of two to five days. I don't know. Is that the, if somebody walks in, if the kindergarten or teacher is ill. This needs a lot more, I think.
So I'm glad you, I'm glad you made, I was going to make a comment on it if people, other people didn't bring it. The, the language that was used in there is directly from guidance from the CDC around school closures. But we actually had some good feedback from our local health department on that topic. And we're going to revise that section based on that feedback. And the other encouraging thing is they are very interested in a regional collaboration with all the school districts they serve to have a common, develop a common response plan in conjunction with the health department, school districts and some local pediatricians. And to develop a common response plan that would be publicly shared with our community before school starts. So I don't want to get ahead of them. They haven't put the details of that, but that was an encouraging thing. And their comment was you may not always need a closure. Every case is a little bit different. But we would have a very set plan of if this, then this and, and strong, as Ms. Osborne said, communication plan around that as well. So I know that's a little general, but I think the encouraging thing is that the planning is, is, is beginning to have a detailed response plan.
Let me pause us for a moment. It's, it's 9:35. And I want to make sure that we sort of balance the asking the detailed questions. And especially I know that the staff wants to know where you see things missing. So Kate, comments like that of where you know you need to see a lot more detail. And, and, and make sure that we've given that level of guidance. So do people feel like this is about the right amount of time to spend on each section? Or do we need to be asking a larger overarching question?
Two questions, maybe not over. But one, what have you guys been thinking about kind of flu season and winter? Because I know that colleges are adjusting your schedule based around that. Because I, I am worried, like, to be honest, since we can't do a quick test for, for COVID, I imagine like one in two kids would have like a symptom of COVID when it comes to winter time in an elementary school, like a runny nose. So have you guys thought about that?
I would just say.
I was just going to say that we, we actually met earlier in the week, putting together a, a kind of an infection control team, for lack of a better descriptor. And one of the things that we talked about is that once we're back in school, COVID is not the only illness that people are going to be having or worried about. So that is something that we will be working with our school nurse, nurses on and have some protocols around that as well.
But I would say that if you have any of the symptoms, one of the things that we are suggesting is that the child would stay at home. So that, I mean, that, and quite frankly, it's one of the things that we would say to parents anyway, that if your child isn't feeling well, if they're have a fever or they're, you know, coughing and those kinds of things, that they should stay at home. So they're not spreading colds or flu or anything. We know that that's not the reality of what happens. But at this point in time, we would be encouraging anyone with, with COVID-like symptoms to check, to make sure and to, to come back, be at school when they're well.
So Debbie, I would just want to share that. And it's, 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 I don't know that it applies to anybody else other than my family. But my child was in a extracurricular sport last year where if she missed one day in the week as a result of sickness, she was not allowed to compete over the week, on that, that, the end of that week. And so, and, and her, her coach was a nurse. And so, so there were several times where Kendra was not feeling well. We're like, look, you need.
She went on to school.
Said, I can't stay home because if I stay home, then I can't compete. And so, I mean, we need to make sure that, that our policies are consistent that, hey, we want you to stay home. We're not going to penalize you for that. Because otherwise they're just, people are just going to, I mean, there's a certain point where your rational decision says, hey, I don't care what the rule says. I'm going to school.
Absolutely. You're exactly right. That's a great point.
And David, we've, this is Jay. Again, we've been having those conversations already with the AVs. And the AVs have already been having those even with the students. Many of the coaches right now, even with the fall athletes are doing a check and connect like we did back in the school, just calling and checking on them, seeing how they're doing, building that relationship and making sure they're okay. That's, but that's a major point that we've talked about with the AVs, that they've already started to communicate with the coaches as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Along those lines, if I may. I mean, I'm still on the confirm, you know, what to do in the environment of confirmed cases. But confirmed cases generally, what can we recommend? Can we require that someone be tested for COVID? I mean, if we can only do certain actions, if for confirmed cases, there may be a whole category of suspected cases where someone may or may not want to get tested. Or anyway, what do we do then?
I would, I would, and Rosal was in the conversation that we had, I, we had with the health department about the contact tracing and with the health department and what they're going to be doing around this. It feels, it feels like to me that they would be taking the lion's share of the contacts and doing that, that kind of work that schools, as I understand it, would not be doing. So you had contact with this person and this person, they talked with us about a partnership that they would need. If a child or a teacher had a confirmed case, then they would need the class list for the children that was in that class. So my understanding, Rosal, please help with this, is that they're doing most, the lion's share of the kind of work I think you're talking about.
Well, my question was upstream. How, how do we know that someone is confirmed? You know, if we suspect somebody has it, what if they don't want to be tested or what do we do if we really think they are? I don't know. That whole area of can we compel a kid to have a test to come to school?
Well, I think we, we file that under the place where you want to know more in, in the next, in the next level of, of, of inquiry and detail around here, around this.
And I think, I think that's a, that's an issue for Ross.
I was about to say, that came up.
There's going to be a lot of, and I, quite frankly, I suspect that there's not going to be a legal answer to that. Immediate future.
Yeah. I was just going to say, Ross, we, we have an infectious disease policy already in place that we would reference in that instance. So we'll just need to go back and look at our policy.
Right, we do. And there has been some guidance from EOC and others that under certain circumstances, we can require staff to undergo testing. The question, Mr. Overberg, that you bring up is the thornier one, and that is what about students?
I would think the answer would be no. I mean, I, that was also coming up. I mean, can you, there's legal issues about whether you can even test people who are in jail. Is it invasive procedure? So I just cannot imagine that we could force our children to.
Not, not absent, not absent a higher authority telling us that we can.
That's right. And so those questions might not have been answered, but with respect to at least staff, we do have guidance on that.
It's made even thornier with the 30% plus false negative rate. I mean, it's like Rosal was saying before about, you know, what do, what does taking temperatures actually do aside from being visible? You know, that it, it might not serve us that well to hang our hats on that kind of data.
Well, it's just, this whole section is written as with response to confirmed cases of COVID. And perhaps it should be drafted suspect, I mean, maybe it needs to be suspected or confirmed.
That's good feedback. Yeah.
One, one question, and this is definitely one for, for, you know, I'd like to find this out later in the process. But when we're talking about in this section, I'll just use the bathrooms. We will limit the number of occupants at any given time based on the size of the bathroom, which makes all the sense in the world. How will we go about, and I don't need an answer to this now, but for, for later. How will we go about limiting that? Is this going to be an honor system? Is it, are we going to have people, you know, at the, at the doors? That would be great to know later on.
Hey guys, I just want to throw this out because this occurred to me and Jono's statement reminded me, and it's not relevant to Jono's comment, but I think it's something I want to have addressed. At least at Western, and I suspect elsewhere, there's a pretty substantial problem with vaping in the bathrooms. And there's no real way to enforce it. And I know that children are specifically avoiding bathrooms because there's vaping going on. And given the fact that there's some indicia that vaping has a pretty substantial negative impact to COVID-19 patients, I would like us to make some pretty serious progress on getting that out of the schools.
Shall I help us move on to the next section?
And I, I have one other big, big level issue. I guess when I'm seeing this plan, let me click on me, when I'm seeing this plan, like it seems difficult. This seems like kids are going to be out of school a lot. It seems like this is going to be hard to implement and maintain. And I guess so, I think we need to be thinking, I know we're putting a lot of effort into this and we need to be, but I want to make sure that we're putting as much effort, if not more into how are we gonna, like, what is this really going to look like, which is kids coming, being at home mainly. So we need to have a robust at-home learning program. I, we've had a lot of parents write in about how even just doing the every other day is, that's really, really hard to manage. And, and a lot of families are not going to be able to, to do that. And so I, I'm maybe not making it super clear, but I just want to look at, not lose sight of the forest for looking at the trees because the reality is I think this is going to be incredibly difficult and not play out. To be frank, and it's probably true for every school division, not play out very well. I mean, come winter, every kid's going to have a runny nose in elementary school. So what do we, you know?
Well, I, I will say that we're already been working with staff as, actually, the last week of school, we, we pulled teachers together to begin to work very clearly on courses and engagement and the kinds of things that we want to make sure are in place for the first day of school. So that work is already started. We have teams and teams of teachers coming in already and working probably as we speak on those kinds of plans and those kinds of documents. So we have taken any, any moment that we have to get ready and to start that, that kind of thinking. We're putting together templates and, and exemplar courses so that teachers can have those as they begin to build their, their courses this summer. That one of the mandates for the PD this summer is those kinds of professional development so that they're developing that blended learning. So what it looks like to be also to be synchronous and not asynchronous. I, we think will begin to answer and help our students with schedules at home. If they are at home.
Okay. Tell me what else we need to talk about. Knowing that we've, you know, got to one, we want to do other topics as well. Help me know what's next.
Were we planning?
We'll go to the next section.
Oh, I just wondered if we were going through the sections because I had some questions.
Yeah, that's the, that's what I'm trying to ask is are you ready to move on to healthy staff? Or does anyone else have an overarching comment that they want to share at this point?
I guess I would just second what Katrina was saying in terms of the, you know, overarching. This is going to be a really difficult thing for all of us to pull off as a division and our individual families. It's going to be difficult. And to be frank, to speak in frank terms, I think, and when we get to the sort of mental health component, it, it's going to be important to realize that there will be waves of deaths. And those might be of, you know, our teachers and our, our own students. So I think when we look at this, it can't just be mechanical, and I know it's not. But I just, I, I think we just need to keep that all in mind that there will be things that we can't exactly predict, but we know might happen. That will really affect our community.
Judy, I think part of also Jono's goal in having the discussion of the retreat was to allow you all to both talk through some of the minutia, but also come into those bigger issues so that the public today could see you having that dialogue, that push and pull between the two. So that's part of the design of what we, of what we've done this morning, Jono, if I've got that correctly.
Indeed.
So let's try to take ourselves to healthy staff to see if anybody has reactions there, places where they'd like to see more. Kate?
Pardon?
Kate, I was wondering if you were wanting to say something about healthy staff.
I guess my question would be, how many of the staff would consider themselves in a higher risk category? And who may, I mean, bus drivers, I mean, all across the board. And although I do understand that some older teachers or at-risk teachers can do virtual, it's hard to be a virtual bus driver and what our policies and all of that will be.
One of the things that we know when we're looking at the high-risk categories is, I, I do not have the specifics for numbers. Many of those are questions that we can't just go and ask our staff. Many of those are questions that we can't just go and ask our staff. But, and one of the things that I also know is that just because a person is in a high-risk category, we, we, we can't force them to not work. So, so one of the things that we're going to have to do as we move forward is, is we're really going to have to work with our, have our, our intention is for our supervisors to work with the staff, all staff, to determine, are there underlying conditions that are going to prevent them from coming into work? If they're, if they, if they do, are they going to feel comfortable coming in? Is that something that they, they are planning to do? We're, we're developing a list of questions that will become guiding questions that our supervisors will work with their staffs on to determine what their actual needs are. This is something that once we have a better sense of what we talked about, learning more about our students and who's coming back, that will also help us, help guide us with what we're going to need staff-wise to support those. And from there, what we will do is, one of the things in the document, it talks about some accommodation. And obviously, you know, virtual is an easy accommodation or relatively easy accommodation for, for teachers, but, but you're exactly right. That does not apply for other staff members. We've talked about, are there ways to reassign people to other situations that may allow them to do work that they may not have been able to do in their original job? And so those are some of the things that we're wrestling with. One of the things that I think is helpful to know is as we brought people back in for our first phase of our employees coming back into work, at this point, we've only had two people, I believe, that have, have needed some, needed to not come in yet. And so I'm hopeful that, I know that right now there's a lot of unknowns and with, with the not knowing exactly start date and schedule and what school is going to look like, I know that there's a lot of angst for our employees around that. And I think that I'm, I'm hopeful that as we start to be able to give some more specifics, then we will be able to get some more specific information and work with everybody about whether or not they think they will be able to come back to work and in what capacity.
So am I hearing from that, that largely determining, it's like self-determined whether you're in a high-risk group?
Yes. And it's interesting because we've had, you know, I, I think all of us have kind of gone through our, our minds of who of, who of our staff we think may fall into one of those categories. And in, in talking to them, you know, some of them are very concerned and, and don't think they're going to be able to come in. And then we have others that are grateful to be coming back into work as well. So it really is a, it's a very personal decision.
I ask that largely because, you know, when you look at the data, obviously, black and brown people are dying at higher rates. And so I wonder, you know, whether, if they're not in, again, those teaching positions, if there are ways that they can stay out but still be able to work.
That is our hope.
You know, there's a very fine line in here, and I, and I understand it. I had brought up a question a couple of months ago as to whether or not any of our employees at that point in time had COVID. And I learned that that is a privacy issue in a big, big way. And, and I fully understand that. And I'm, I'm not challenging that in the least. And it's at the same time, it's going to be very important for there to be some confidentiality side to it, to protect the teachers, the staff. If they, if they don't want it known that they're in that position, but I think it's going to be important for us to know, not the school board, you know, but, but in, within the system. And I'm not sure where I'm going with that, but it's just somehow it's important that we, that somebody be aware. And, and I know that we'd be sensitive in order to, in dealing with it. How can we make sure that we're, we're aware? Somebody does have that. Sorry, Claire, please go ahead.
No, I'm sorry for jumping in over you. I, I think this is very much aligned to, with what Ms. Collins was saying about the, the work that we're going to work with our families, to educate our families and, and help them understand the importance of, you know, keeping your child home if there are symptoms. I think it's a very similar thing with our staff. We need to work with them, make sure that we've got really strong relationships, help educate as part of our coming back in training or onboarding, for lack of a better word. You know, making sure that we, that they understand the importance of being open and honest with their supervisors to let them know if something is going on. I, I think that's a first step. And obviously, this is something that we need to get much better developed as far as that process goes. But I, I, you know, one of the things that I have heard throughout all of this is that when people are more upfront and when they know that things are going on, that we can better plan and prepare for the, the actualities. And, and that's what, you know, we would, we would do. And we will have procedures in place so that for our supervisors, when they hear something, they will, for a reporting process to help us out there.
I may just add one more thing on the confidentiality, Mr. O'Carroll. With respect to staff, or hypothetically, if a staff member tests positive for COVID-19, and we would have to notify those who may have been exposed to it, we can do so without disclosing the identity of the specific person simply by saying, you've been, we have information that you may have been exposed and the like. So the, the folks who will have the information, the specific information about the identity of individuals will be very, very small. And that will not be communicated without the individual's consent to anybody else.
Thank you for that. I think, I think those are both great answers. And, and I'm especially glad to hear what you just said, Mr. Holden. This is another one for a little bit further down the line, but as the PD titles, subjects get put together and for, for rollout in, in August, may we please get a copy of what those titles are? It sure would be interesting to know.
Absolutely. And actually, we will, we're starting our PD now. So we'll go ahead and get those out to you. We've got a lot of things scheduled in July. So we'll get that out to you as well.
Let me check in and see if any school board member who hasn't had a chance to comment yet would like to come off of mute and talk with us. You all don't really need me to do that, do you? You're pretty good at inserting yourselves when you'd like to. So is there anything else to say specifically about healthy staff?
I did have a question largely like the one that I asked yesterday about leave. What about staff who have, who become sick and, or who are taking care of someone and have exhausted their leave as well as the FF? Some.
FF-CRA.
Yeah, okay, there you go. So what are we, what would we be able to do for those staff?
That, that's one of those things that, again, we'll have to look at each case individually, and we're, we're working on developing some protocols around there. Once a person has, the, the, the real challenge is when a person has used up all of their leave balances. And, and, you know, the, one of the things I know that we have as a possibility is a extended leave of absence, which gives a little bit of a, of job security, but it's, again, a limited period of time. But I think that is something that we would make sure that our, our people that are in those situations are very aware of. Obviously, we want to do our best to protect the, the, the jobs of our employees balanced with what the needs are of the school division.
There's also, and I'm sure you guys have looked at it, but I just want to make sure there's, and it hasn't been resolved at this point, but there's a, an argument to be made that OSHA permits an employee from not coming to work based upon a justifiable fear of injury or death of an unsafe condition at work. And so I've been advising my corporate clients to be very cautious about any actions they take against an employee to leave time or anything. Because, and I, I want to, I want to liken my employee who is theoretically at a a nuclear, nuclear power plant. And there is a nuclear release, a radiation release. Under the OSHA requirements, an employee is perfectly justified to say, hey, there's radiation, I'm not coming to work. And they can't be penalized for that decision. It is unclear at this point, from my perspective, whether an individual, and I, I, I err on the side of caution, an individual with a justifiable, reasonable and articulated concern regarding the safety of the work environment is protected from any, any sort of job action. And so if, if I fall within a category, and specifically if my physician says, Dave, you can't go to work, this is dangerous. I think that, I think that gives them protection under OSHA if they come to the employer and say, hey, look, I, I think I have an articulable concern regarding the safety. And so I just want us to be very proactive on that because, I mean, you know, it's not something we typically consider, but I think it's, I think it's going to be a big issue with a lot of places going forward.
One, one of the things that you'll, you'll notice in the healthy staff section is when we get down to the attendance and leave portion, the, the two questions that are asked, one, the first one is around people that, that have the underlying conditions or COVID themselves or, or anything associated there. And, and, and then the next one is about people who have trepidation about coming back to work. And in those cases, they do not meet those other qualifying conditions. And, and very honestly, the main difference between the two is that one has the FF-CRA availability of leave. The, the leave options are exactly the same in the other one. However, we, in the, in the, in the one where they have the qualifying conditions, obviously FF-CRA is an option, and then it ends with looking at a lot, some accommodations that may be helpful. In the, in the, in the situation where the person has trepidation, where we start with, what are the accommodations that may be able to help the, the person come into work, recognizing that they may not be able to? And then the leave options then are exactly the same. So, so to your point, Mr. Ober, it's, we really do want to make sure that we are treating our employees fairly.
Have you looked, have you looked at it through the lens of OSHA, though? Because I don't.
I'm going to read, I'm going to give you on that one.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Ober, yes, we're, we're aware of what OSHA's requirements are in that regard. And I think the school division up to this point, and I'm sure will continue to be as compassionate as possible. Just to give you another example with respect to accommodations, one of the high-risk groups are the folks over 65 years old. I'm one of them. And that is not a disability under the ADA. However, certain guidance, and I think we have all also thought about including that category into those who could seek an accommodation, if not under the ADA specifically or legally seeking accommodation because of the high-risk group. So I, I do think that we have to be very mindful of, of folks who may come and say that it's not safe, and explain why, and then we'll have to address it. How can we make it safe? Can we provide a different PPE? Can we do disinfecting? They have to have more than just a generalized complaint. It has to be something that they can tell us that then we can.
Hey, it has to be reasonably articulated.
Yes, I agree. And I, and I'm, we're prepared to do that as well. As Dr. Cross said, this kind of case basis, somebody may come with an articulable fear or complaint, may be able to address it. We may be able to change schedules to accommodate that. We may be able to provide additional PPE for that person to alleviate that concern. But each and every case will have to be looked at. We are aware that this is something that we could very well, like we say during the return to school phases.
And I think we need to, again, I said this yesterday, but I think we need to prepare our administrators so that they don't, I mean, inadvertent comments of what they may see as encouragement of like, no, no, come on, we need you, you know, can, can come back to bite us pretty seriously. So our administrators need to be trained that soon as this comes up, look at Claire's office.
Well, with respect to a lot of these issues, accommodations and the like, I, I'm sure, and Dr. Cross has explained this, that we need one consistent voice. And that's why these requests are going to, many of them go to the human resource department. And we're going to advise our administrators, principals, not to act in individual schools. They're not equipped, they don't necessarily know what the requirement is, contact the human resource department and or me as soon as possible, and then we can start tackling the problem.
Are we ready to move on to healthy students or?
I have a staff question, which is sort of related. If we're only having our kids come every other day and I, I, I'm, are we going to be able to keep all of our staff? I'm specifically thinking right now about food service, which will be far reduced from what it is if all the kids are there every single day. And I don't know what the impact on bus drivers will be. But anyway, that's just a broad question.
We, we are not looking to do any additional reductions. And so we'll, we'll be looking to utilize our staff how we can best support the needs of the schools and the school division.
All right, just one point of clarification. Has the information about healthy staff been distributed in any form to our staff as of this point? So that they can be aware of some of the tentative situations that might happen.
So, so this is all part of this document. So the, the sharing of this document is the initial time that they are getting access to this information. Obviously, just like the, the need to communicate very clearly with the, the parents about their students' return to school, we will need to do the same with the staff as well and make sure that we've got things very much laid out for them. The idea of having something in a concise place where they can go and look for answers is going to be very important. And so this is the beginning of the, of the communication around that. And, and just so you know, the press release from, that, from yesterday was also shared with all staff members through the compass, which is our, which is our mechanism for communicating with all of our staff members.
Claire, if I may, it, it's great to have a handbook or a single source where people can look, but I would encourage from a public health communications perspective to also have posters and reminders everywhere in the schools and the bathrooms, on the buses, because people do forget, especially.
We've, we've definitely talked about signage. Yes. Thank you, though.
Okay, shall we make our way to healthy students?
I don't want to speak first every time, but I didn't hear anyone else, so.
No, I think you allowed for a nice pause.
I, I gave people some time. So one thing I'm just curious about in terms of, you know, I know we're communicating with our families, you know, these are the things that you should look for and, you know, please keep your child at home for the safety of all of our community. I know that in the past, like, three months, I've tried to buy a thermometer, and I have not been able to. So I'm just, and I'm curious about whether we will attempt to provide thermometers for families who have not been able to get them or who just aren't able to get them.
Jay, I can answer that. We've had that conversation around that and that, you know, one of the things sometimes we ask for donations, and that might be something if, if we still find ourselves not able to purchase them, that we could ask the community to donate. So, you know, there's, we're just trying to think about ways that we can get, get items that students need in their hands. So a thermometer starts looking like a backpack or a pencil or, you know, the things that we typically make sure that students have to start school. It seems to be an additional tool that we have to think about now. So that has been part of the conversation. I don't think we've had quite an answer yet, but we are aware that this can be a significant challenge for some parents.
Thank you. And then. And then along those lines, something that we talked about yesterday was mask wearing. And I guess I just wanted some clarity around whether or not we are going to require those as they are best practice for keeping kids safe.
Jay, do you want to talk about what the group talked about? And then I can talk a little bit about some of the things we talked with the health department about.
Absolutely. So again, we were, you know, I'll go back to kind of what Rosalyn was talking about a little bit earlier with this. But we talked about that, looking at the legality, whether we could force kids to wear them or not. Interpretations of CBC have been working with our school nurses and groups. And what our group talked about was, you know, encouraging kids to wear masks, having masks available at the school if kids wanted to wear one but didn't have one. And as well as, you know, in addition to wearing the mask, you also have the social distancing aspect or the physical distancing aspect within the classroom as well with Judy.
So the bottom line on that is encouragement?
When we talked to the health department, we were somewhat stronger when riding the bus. Because that you can't social distance there. We know that you can't be more than six feet apart. So that we're looking into being able to think about it in terms of the activity and not just, you know, everybody has to wear a mask all day long, everything, every time, for everything you do. So trying to be very thoughtful about when and where 10 students in a classroom that can social distance, how much mask wearing do you need to think about? And of course, that also depends on the age of the child. So there's, you know, lots of different pieces of this that we're going to have to land on the mask-wearing part. And then, of course, Ross will chime in with what we can actually compel and what we can't.
Well, I'm going to say, I'm sorry, Ms. Lee. What I was going to say is that with respect to staff, that, you know, as a condition of employment, we can require wearing of masks, especially if the teacher is going to be within six or seven feet of a student. On a bus, because we have layered mitigation measures and because transportation is different than providing education, we may have more latitude about requiring mask-wearing on the bus as a condition of being allowed to get on the bus. With respect to in-school, the guidance of the state so far is to recommend wearing of masks. We do have communities who may be very interested in having their children wearing masks, especially older children. There may be some who do not. This is another legal conundrum right now because the laws really haven't caught up to our situation. And it is, I will tell you, in many meetings with school board attorneys around the state, this is something that's being debated right now. As Ms. Collins pointed out, it's a recommendation to wear the mask. And there really hasn't been a determination. And maybe, as Mr. Obergeitz pointed out earlier, maybe it's going to require a higher authority to say that this is going to be a requirement of participating in our public schools.
Then I would say, I know that we're going to be surveying parents and asking about, you know, whether you plan to send your child to school. For me, that hinges on whether kids will be wearing masks. Because I know that even with ventilation, even with social distancing, and I think requiring children to social distance is, I mean, that's going to be hard to enforce. So I think knowing where we are with that at that moment when we survey is going to be important to say, hey, we'll be encouraging, but that's all we can do. So I'm just sure that when we communicate with parents, that that's key.
From the legal perspective, I will keep you, I'll continue to monitor as I do. And I'll keep you apprised to see whether we have legal guidance in addition to that being furnished from our health officials in the Thomas Jefferson Health District.
Thank you, Ross.
In this section, there's an affirmative obligation, was a request that families notify the school if their child has COVID or tested positive. But I'm not sure there's anything in here that, what if the parent or another family member is positive, but the child isn't showing any symptoms? Is there an obligation to notify or to keep the child at home in that situation?
I can let somebody else maybe speak to that. We did not address that in the session with the students.
I think that's a great question. We can go back to look at that and ask the health department to weigh in. They did weigh in on some things. I don't remember that being one they weighed in on either. So I think that's a great piece to add.
Anyone else want to chime in relative to students? Okay, it sounds like we might be ready to move on to healthy learning, the fourth section, for those following along.
Ms. Kastner is here to answer any questions on this section.
I know we got to a couple of these at the beginning. We jumped down there, so. Hi, Michelle. Let me suggest this. I'd like to do what I would normally do. Judy, can I give us one second? So I actually, if we were having a normal retreat right now where our goal was to be together until 1:00 PM, this is actually when I would give you a bit of a quick stretch break. And so I'd like to suggest that because I think that can really help with engagement and conversation. As you go into that break, here are a couple of things I'd like to suggest. One, do it as fast as you can. Come back as quick as you can so that we can resume. But I'd say no more than five to seven minutes for this first break. We'll take another one later in the morning. And then think about for me, what else is it that you want to talk about relative to the last section of the report? And then anything else that we can give feedback to the staff about some of the questions that they have asked me to consider is sort of, does it feel like this is headed in the right direction? Is there a way that you would want to see content presented differently? Does this feel like it is committed to the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here in terms of the health of everyone and the system? So any additional feedback you have for the staff and especially what's missing? I know that's so important to them. But let's go ahead and take ourselves a quick break, get up, stretch. And Judy, when we come back, we'll start with you, okay? Great. All right, I see everybody coming back. I think we're close to being ready. Dave, did you like the break?
As you know, breaks are important.
I do believe in them. And I think we can do them in the time of Zoom as well. All right. Doing my own personal little roll call here, looking for my faces. One, two, three, four, five. There's Katrina. Hello, kids. And I think I've almost got Ellen back. Okay, so we're back live, correct? Back with the public? I'm going to assume that's the case. Okay, wonderful. Before we get started, let me also just pause and see if anybody has any feedback on flow here. Are we doing what you want us to do? I've been taking a lot of notes as we go through this and responding to your questions as they come in to me. So that's a little bit of why I'm looking down, making sure I cover everything. Anybody have feedback about our phone here?
I just want to say that I think this is valuable work and it's basically a work session. It just doesn't feel like a retreat to me. I mean, there's a value, especially when we have two new board members, to having that time. And I don't know how we do it under social distancing, but I just think we function better as a board when we have time to do that reflective time with the board.
So the feedback that Jono had gotten from some of you, and I think the sense of things, was that there was a deep need to dive into this content before too much more time had passed, that the board wanted to be able, so.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I think it's very important and I think it's exceptionally important to do the work.
Right.
Don't want to lose sight of the fact that there's a value to doing the other stuff we do.
And so my question for you is, are you talking about physically being together or the PD that we have planned for next week?
Yes. And I recognize this is not-
That was more-
Eating together has a value. Sitting at the table together and just not talking about education, but talking about our family lives has a value. And I don't want to lose sight, I don't want to lose sight of that importance. This stuff is very important, but I just don't want it to, this to supplant that team building that has-
And to your point, Dave, you know, I was watching yesterday when you mentioned also the question about when do we gather back together? If we're considering bringing other parts of the school division back together, when can we as a board? And so I've sort of added that, one of our topics for next week, when we go into professional development for the board, is to talk about how have you been doing in the time of COVID? What needs to happen next? What does that, to actually check on how you're feeling, your mental health around this time and everything that's going on? So thank you, Dave, and know that that is a big part of the spirit of next week. And that doesn't mean we can't get to it a little more today. We'll see how the ebb and flow of things go. But that's a big part of, once we finish any other business, we'll start with a business portion of the meeting at the beginning of next week because we need to make some decisions around school calendar and other things. But then that's what the bulk of the rest of the day is going to be like. And that will be my attempt to achieve that for you via Zoom. You'll let me know how that goes. But thank you for that comment. Any other feedback like that?
Allison, maybe one other thing, housekeeping wise. Ross had mentioned that Jono didn't read the statement at the beginning. And I guess this would be a good place also to have that statement read.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I appreciate you helping me not fall on my face.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I will state for the record, and the minutes of this meeting should so reflect that the meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State law and Albemarle County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being streamed live on the Albemarle County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Thank you.
Maybe one other point of clarification, too. With this meeting and with our meeting next week, there won't be a possibility of having live public comment in the waiting room. So, right? Am I correct in that?
These are special meetings and we don't have public comment in special meetings. That is correct.
Well, I think to make sure that everybody's on the same page, I think you should sort of clarify that when you make that statement. Because I think some people expect, when you say that, that that's a possibility for this meeting, whereas it's not. So I think just to be crystal clear, we should sort of specify that.
I duly noted and I will do that. I think that it's covered in the, according to the school board's protocol, but that is vague and I will clarify that in our next meeting.
I think it would be advantageous because I agree with Graham and I agree with some of the people who've been complaining to us that, hey, it's not clear what we can and can't do. I think that's a fair complaint.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put in the, when we update the agenda, right? And I don't know- when we update the agenda, right, when, and I don't know if this is possible. I fully accept the fact this may not be possible. I don't know computers, but it seems to me that we could, we could have a Facebook, or not a Facebook page, a webpage specifically for our meetings, and indicate whether public comment is available at this meeting, and if so, click this thing to sign up.
Well, to that, to that point, go ahead, Allison.
John, I just want to make sure everyone knows, this is also one of our subtopics for next week, is to kind of sort of take a pause on how are we doing, what are we hearing from our constituents? So I don't want to take us away from it because I think it's important to remember, we are being viewed publicly right now. So the public knows that this is on our mind, and that in making improvements for as long as we are virtual is really our goal. So we will review that next week as well.
Okay, I'd just like to make one comment, though, and that is that Ms. Johnston is looking into some alternative ways to do public comment. And when she's back, she can probably brief us on it and let us see. So it is being looked into for some alternative means of doing it.
And this is being livestreamed?
Today?
Yes.
Yes.
Which is why I wore pants.
TMI.
So helpful to know, Dave. I made the assumption. But that's good to know. On that note, because remember, I think the important thing to remember, point of order wise, our retreats are always open to the public. It's just that it's usually physically complicated for them to join us, but they could always come. Now, one of the special spirits of the Zoom is that more people can be with us in the moment. So thank you, Ellen, please.
We mentioned minutes, but I'm embarrassed to say that I don't really know how to find the minutes. And I should probably know that if somebody can at some point clue me in because I don't know where they are on the website, or if I should get those. I don't, some boards actually.
We'll cover.
Yeah, some boards actually approve minutes, so I'm just not sure what our, what we do there.
That, that is a very live subject, and I'll be glad to show you where they are. And we have taken some action to fill in any vacancies or blanks where there should be minutes in there. And I'll be glad to discuss that at a later time, when we get that solution in place, which should be shortly after the beginning of July.
For our newer members, it's very interesting to watch, and it notes when you go to the bathroom. Sort of when I notice is like, wow, I went to the bathroom, and it notes, Mr. Ober left the room, Mr. Ober returned to the room.
Well, Mr. Ober, to be fair, it doesn't note what you're doing when you leave the room. It just notes that you left. On that note, is there anything else at that level, or anything that anybody wants to name for me as an agenda item for next week? You will be able to give me this feedback after today as well. But I just want to pause before we finish on the report and then shift into the SRO discussion.
Are we gonna, are we gonna be discussing minutes at the next board retreat, next Friday?
Yes. Anybody else? Okay, on that note, let's go to the fourth section of the report. And see if people have feedback specifically around healthy learning.
Kate, I see you like getting ready to talk, so I. Are you talking?
Kate, we need you off mute.
Like Judy, I listened to the, and probably several other of you, listened to the EAB presentation and the dramatic loss of learning we can expect with this long pause. And maybe going into the, you know, next year or two. And one of the guiding questions is, how will we know where our students are in their learning? We didn't, of course, have SOLs this year. I know at least one state has already canceled their standardized testing for next year. What? How will we know? I mean, the numbers that were given in that, in that webinar were, you know, we're looking at two to five years perhaps to catch up. So how will we know where our students are? And particularly, our most vulnerable students for learning loss.
I'll speak to that. We have a very robust, I would say, level of assessments for reading and math that we actually give to our students, aside from the SOLs. So we have the plan that when students come back, we will be very thoughtful about our pre-assessments so that we can gauge exactly where students are.
And my question is actually a follow-up on that. Is there, are there specific difficulties in giving those in digital format and online?
Debbie, do you want to speak to that?
Absolutely. I can speak to that. Actually, we have some tools around that. Schoology has tools around that. We have a program tool called Illuminate that allows us to do that. Our CSO for our elementary school is really a portfolio. So we actually, that, that one piece of our assessment, balanced assessment portfolio is well-built. So that's, I mean, we've been doing that probably over the last five years of how do you build a balanced assessment? How is it not just multiple choice and true false, false kind of assessment? So those tools allow us to do that. The other piece I would add to Ms. Kastner's comment is, one of the things that's happening with the professional development is for each unit that the teachers are teaching, they are coming in with a pre-assessment. So that's a pre-assessment, not necessarily of what they're going to teach, but the foundational pieces that should be in place as students go into that new content. I think you'll see a comment on mastery learning. We're going, that's, that's best practice. It's something we've been moving towards and trying to get to, but this is one of those opportunities to magnify that and talk, talk really quite well about what are key points, what are, what is the student mastering in this? And be very diligent in our learning continuums. You know, if the skills that are needed, but the concepts and the processes that are needed to are spelled out very clearly for students. Sometimes those are hidden to students. But we're working very clearly and consciously on making those visible.
You think check and connect? Well, through that data that's collected, will there be any way to have individualized remedial work for the kids that might be revealed through, through the check and connect connections?
Yes. I mean, we saw that clearly when we reflected with the teachers. I'm just going to reference serving our L students. We had ESOL teachers working with our students one-on-one, even throughout COVID-19. And what we learned was those learning partnerships were key in helping the students feel successful with their learning. And the teachers also emphasized that their level of creativity was robust during COVID-19 because they wanted students to be able to demonstrate their mastery in multiple ways. And that's one very positive takeaway that all of the features talked about in the committee.
Ms. Collins, you had mentioned, and we, we saw it in the EAB presentation as well, about, you know, obviously the COVID slide. And how a lot of it for the young kids will have to do with reading and then sixth grade math, which I found very enlightening. I didn't understand exactly where those points were, so I really appreciated that information. And I know that this year we had hoped to be able to expand our being a reader curriculum. And we obviously have not been able to because of.
Actually, we, we are. That's one of the, it's one of the things we prioritize. So those, those materials were purchased. And are, we're doing professional development on that this summer. I just said that as a priority. I'd heard from you, I'd heard from teachers, and I said, of the thing, of the money we have left in the budget, we're going to prioritize that. So we did.
Well, I'm very happy to hear that. Is there an online component to that for students who opt out?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, Michelle, you can answer that, too. But yes.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much.
Can I get some clarity around the check and connect? I just got an email from my child's school about using it. What does it mean to check and connect? Is the teacher, come this fall, is it going to look any different? Does the teacher actually visit the student, or what, call them, or if they're not engaging? How are they checking and connecting?
I think they check and connect in multiple ways. I said, I think it depends on the family. Most of the teachers would call the parents and, and talk to the parents about what would work best for your family in terms of connecting with the children. So I think it varies from family to family. I think the idea behind it is just to stay connected and to be super responsive to the child's needs and also the family's needs. I mean, we had many families that have six to eight children in the home. And so some families were, were saying, you know what, we were good because it was becoming almost too much. So I think the idea is being super individualized to support each child and family.
Yeah, I guess this is, it's probably just yelling into the wind because it's out of our hands, but you know, reading, reading this, it's just hard to envision. It's hard to envision it's serving our students, obviously, as well as going to school. Because for my child in an elementary, I can only really speak to elementary, but the online learning component is me
Right.
being with them and teaching them and taking the time. And even a check and connect is like me scheduling a time to have a teacher come talk to my student about, it's just, it's cumbersome and it's
Right.
and it's hard. And I don't know what I'm, what I'm really getting at, other than to say that we're going to lose a lot of, I think, student growth over time. And I don't know. It's just something that we have to anticipate happening. Because this is, I feel like I'm probably from a very privileged, like I only work part-time, and even then it's hard. And it's hard to do the things that make up that it's supposed to be to help you, like to get a kindergartner or a second grader to do their CSO that then it's, I don't know. Something.
One of the things that we, we've heard from the governor's office and is in this document is some prioritizing. And we've, the, this document and the governor's office prioritize young children. So they're looking at K2, we're looking at K5. So we're, we're trying to think about a schedule that prioritizes elementary students so they're in the school building more often than perhaps their secondary peers. I know that's not going to be popular with our secondary parents, but we feel like at some point in time, there are things that we have to prioritize. And again, we're looking to do that. We're looking to follow, follow, follow the governor's advice and this document as well.
Making any kind of prioritization based on family situation, or is it just by grade level?
We're, we're, we're doing some big rocks first, and the big rock would be grade level, and then we'll start prioritizing specific family needs or internet access, or special education, or English language learners. Those are, those become kind of the list of prioritizing as we think through that. But again, you know, as we talked about earlier, it's the bus situation, and it starts limiting the number of students we can get to school.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go.
Um, given what we know about how significant the learning loss will be, and I know we're going to do an initial assessment, are we going to have any concrete guideposts about where we'd like to be by next May or June? That might inform whether or not we need to extend the school year, or, I mean, since we know we're going to have a learning loss, a COVID drop, it seems to me we need a strategic educational plan about how we're going to catch our students up. Not just how they're going to school in September.
So I would, I would comment on that. I agree. I think that right now what we're working on is really just transitioning into dealing with what's right in front of us. However, I was alarmed by what it showed in terms of the COVID slide, but I think more alarming is when you look at those same slide decks, you'll see the summer slide that occurs for students annually, and it's most impactful with with students who are underprivileged. So one of the things we've been talking about at the cabinet level, and we're starting to gather some, some of our own data around, is studying our own summer slide and the annual impact that it has on student learning. There's a lot of mythology about whether or not underprivileged students can learn at the same rate as their peers. The absolute fact is that they can. There's also a lot of mythology around whether or not the kind of instructional practices that we use for all children are as impactful with underprivileged students. And the truth is that they are. And looking at our data from a national level, you would see that during the course of a school year, all students make the same kind of progress. And in some years, in fact, the quote-unquote underprivileged students exceed their more wealthy peers in terms of progress. Our teachers are highly effective. They make great, they get great results with their students. And every summer, because some students have more access to continuous cultivation throughout the summer that other students do not, there's the summer slide. And so the students who have opportunities during the summer, summer to enrich and extend their learning, come back to school with actual growth that occurs during that summer period, which continues to put them ahead of their marginalized peers. So there's one of the things that I would consider structuring into another retreat with the board at some point would be to start off by reading a section from Malcolm Gladwell's book that's called Outliers, where he lays out in stark detail the impact of the summer slide and the very promising detail that if we take measures to eliminate an extended summer break by spreading the school year evenly over what we currently use as this agrarian calendar, but instead move to where we spread the school year evenly over the 365-day year, you can virtually eliminate that slide. It will level the playing field for students and provide multiple opportunities throughout the years for, the year for students to catch up on their learning if they need to. And also for teachers to engage in voluntary professional development to deal with the needs of students right in front of them during that time. I'm putting the cart a little bit before the horse by talking about this because it's really something that we're currently just studying. Last week I had a meeting with Debbie, Chris Gilman, Mark Leach, and also Sarah Duzenberry and Christine Diggs. Because what I wanted to, what I want to do is to look at our own data for Alamo County schools and replicate the tables that are in Malcolm Gladwell's book so that we can show people that we, in fact, have the same kind of summer slide that other places experience. And I think we did land on some data that we could use with map testing in elementary school because that's given in the fall and the spring. You need to have something that you can look at fall, spring, fall, again, so that you can see what the impact of the summer slide is. Because I know lots of times people have an understanding of something at the national level and even the state level, but they need to see it for themselves locally so that they understand we have some of the same issues that, that you have in other places. So Kate, I'm really glad you brought that up. I, we've also done a little bit of preliminary research with the Education Advisory Board to get insights around how other high-performing school systems around the country implement extended learning time. And what I would want to avoid is a conversation of just something called a year-round calendar. There's certain branding that goes with that that can infuriate people. However, I think that talking about an adjusted calendar that extends over the course of a 365-day year is more of a recovery calendar. And I think that we would want to. And I think that we would want to have that in, as a tool in our tool belt, moving forward as a school system. Um, so that there's that option for families, um, at least in each feeder pattern to have uh, an extended, what I would call a recovery calendar because it's a fact. Katrina was not just uh, screaming in the wind. It is an absolute fact that our kindergarten students, first grade students, there are finite skills that they only really have uh, so much time to learn and build uh, so that they become competent readers later that without addressing and accelerating and catching them up, they're, they're going to be behind where they should be. And I do think that having a recovery calendar in place for four or maybe five years minimum um, after this will be a necessity. Uh, and then it's a question of, once people experience a, a calendar that stretches through the whole year, I think in most places and what we've seen in the research is they don't want to go back. So I just thought I'd put that on the table as a, more of a futuristic topic of discussion. I'm certainly interested in hearing the board kick it around.
Matt, I was talking with DJ this morning about that exact issue. I mean, it was like I spent, I spent forty-five minutes with DJ before this meeting talking about that. I think it's something we absolutely have to consider. Um, I, I, I think it will scare people because it's a huge change, but I think that's something we absolutely need to look at. One of the factors I hope we don't miss though is that it's not only going to impact our, 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 our students and our families, it's going to have a huge impact on our staff. We have a fair number of staff who have jobs in the summer to supplement their incomes. If we break those, if we break the breaks up differently, it makes it much more challenging for those staff members to, to get that employment. Um, so we're just going to have to go in with why, eyes wide open and, and assure their, our, our staff that we are thinking about them while considering this.
I'd rather have them, uh, to be honest with you, I mean, I don't want to get into the weeds of problem solving every detail of it now. However, that's a great question. That's a great point. So it's good to look and see what other places have done uh, to address that and you know, as, as someone who came up as a teacher, I painted houses in the summer. I worked for Parks and Rec. Uh, I did all kinds of stuff in the summer. I'm sure my school system would have much, if they had the opportunity, would have enjoyed employing me as a teacher. So I could help kids uh, when they need help. So um, what we, what, what I would say is that it opens up more opportunities for um, stipending, stipending teachers and treating them like professionals they are and valuing what they know and can do. And so for example, if you ran a school year where you, you had um, three to four week intercessions between nine week periods, we could employ teachers uh, to do the kind of um, extra time and support that we need for students to engage in enrichment with students. So that's just one example of how successful school systems have, have made that shift, Dave, and that's a great point.
Uh, just to follow up with Debbie, I think, what do we, I mean, one of the, one piece of our um, equity plan was pre-K, what are we doing with pre-K? Since they're also crowding onto our buses, uh, how are we addressing them for the next school year?
Uh, they, we are there, they're fully in the plan. Uh, we've had some preliminary conversations with them about how they want to look at that. There's um, they're looking at maybe every other day, they're looking at for half, half days, but that, they are just like us trying to think about um, how to do um, the, the health mitigation, how to follow the CDC guidelines and the governor's guidelines, et cetera, to bring their students in, but they are fully part of the plan.
I had a uh, two things. One, um, first one is talking about the summer slide. Are there any, I know we're delaying the school year to give teachers time better. Is there anything we could be offering the students for the summer right now? Because we had a lot of activities on seesaw and then the end of the school year was just like wipe seesaw clean, you don't get access to it.
Hmm, actu- I'll say, actually, that was one of the slides from last night that talked about summer school. We're trying to do a little more than we've ever done. We're going to put enrichment, we're going to continue to put enrichment uh, options up for, for parents so that if you want to go look for an activity, that's, that's, that's good. We're going to, we're do that. Um, new activities for six weeks in um, in the summer. We're going to offer parents. Uh, some parents told us those enrichment activities were great, but I, um, the motivation for my child to do them was not so great. Uh, and a teacher helping with that could help. So we're offering parents, if you'd like to have a teacher call your child once a week and talk with them about which activities they're doing and how that's going. Uh, it's kind of a project mentality. We're offering parents that does it. So those are two options that we're offering that we've never offered before. And then we're offering the same uh, invitation, summer school uh, for students that we already had identified as uh, not being, reading on grade level in March. So if, we'll be inviting those students in, we're going to be doing virtual tutoring. So you would have a time that I would call you and we would do a tutoring session through Zoom, uh, et cetera. So those, those activities are already happening and we are extending those times uh, to four weeks. Usually we do about um, I don't know, two weeks, uh, four hours. So we're trying to think about extending that um, and having more contact uh, than we might necessarily had. So, and those are one-on-one sessions um, or small group depending, the school-based intervention teams are making those kind of decisions. So that's, that's up and running this summer. As we move into phase two, we may have some opportunities to bring children in uh, in small groups or uh, individually. So we're going to pursue that as well.
With the enrichment activities that you were talking about, is the mailing ups, option being considered or being used for those parents who do not have good internet access?
Yes, we can, we are, we're looking, uh, the principals are working through all of those different scenarios, just like they did before. Which parents want to participate and don't have uh, connections or that, those, those pieces. So we're following some of the same practices that we did um, as we, in the spring as we closed.
And also uh, recently uh, elementary principals were communicated that we can actually open up seesaw um, for families if you're interested. That just happened a couple of days ago. Um, so I would encourage um, parents, if you're interested, just to communicate with your principal and that can be opened up again.
And we'll, we'll get that communication out.
Yes.
So my other question is, um, you know, as much as we do, there's still, I still, a gaps kind of persist because if you open up those seesaw, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to be using with my kids. I know the parents that are going to be like, let's make sure that we're doing this because they have the time in the day to do it. And if you have the time, it just takes time. So I guess my, my follow-up is to go back to what Michelle was saying about assessments. You guys had mentioned map testing. I used that when I was a teacher and it was actually beyond just measuring my students' growth. It was really important for measuring me as a teacher and the progress I was making and, and whether I was addressing those gaps. And so do we currently use it? Are we going to be using it in that regards? Not to just see where our students are, but to see if our teachers are, are catching them up in the future.
We do not currently use MAP in elementary schools. We use it in middle schools.
And the goal is, given that we're not going to have uh, end of year testing potentially, maybe, who knows? Um, we're going to start using it in elementary schools.
We are, we had not made that, that kind of decision. One of the things we do in elementary schools is we have a very robust assessment in reading and math. So those, and those have been consistently uh, parallel to SOL scores. So we can look at those scores and say, if, you know, the child is uh, typically if a child is reading honorable, uh, above grade level, they are passing SOL scores in general. Or, and actually pretty clear on that. So we, we have some uh, parallel assessments that we can use to determine where students are. We also can, while it's hard to pick, compare cohorts, over time, we can say our fourth graders were reading uh, seventy, eighty, ninety percent of them, them were reading at this level. So we can begin to compare cohorts. Those benchmarks are very clear for grade levels so that we know if a child's reading above, on or below grade level. So we have those kinds of pieces in place for elementary schools. And then MAP in place for middle schools.
So I guess I just wanted to say that I'm, I would love to see growth in that area because it's a good way to um, I know I came from a charter school background, so it's not the same, but in charter schools, they use map testing pretty extensively to make sure that teachers are, are making sure that every student we click it, uh, even if they're behind grade level, it's, it, it gets rid of that a piece of making the excuse of, well, they were behind when they came in and so they're behind now. And it lets you really show, well, actually a lot of times our students are behind, they can make two or three years worth of growth in one year if you're, if you're targeting them. So I'm excited to hear that. I want to see more accountability measures like that as we proceed.
Okay, how are we doing? Anything else relative to healthy learning? So let's pause now and I think just say, is there anything in closing um, that we want to say about the report in general or the work left to be done? I, I think one of the important things I know Matt has reiterated to me is how much all of you are welcome to cabinet meetings. Uh, I mean, we have to alternate how many people can be there and things like that, but Matt, one of the things we may do is think about how we continue to let people know when particular topics might be a focus of the cabinet meeting. Um, Debbie, you might be able to help folks think about sort of how we communicate that. But um, I think those of you who've told me you've gone to cabinet meetings have really appreciated the opportunity to kind of dive down um, with the cabinet. So uh, but with that being said, kind of closing comments about the report to date. What, where, where, where you celebrate it perhaps, where you might look for more. Just give each board member a chance to maybe say something there. Dave, you get to go first, buddy, because you're in the top left-hand corner of my screen.
Yeah, I'm in the top right-hand corner of my screen.
Good to know.
I got nothing.
All right, Kate.
I think it was a very thorough outline. Um, I mean, one of the things that I've been concerned about, I guess perhaps because Edwards with UVA is twenty thousand students returning to the community and what we do if there's a community outbreak, but you know, we're not looking at it necessarily in the school. How do we handle that? And I'm sure it's consult, consult with our public health department. But that's one of my concerns is that we will have a significant uptick in the community that may, what do we do as a school division with that? Because this is looking at, this is how it is, it's static and this is inside of our classrooms or inside of our buses. But it's not looking at the bigger community.
Debbie, anything in particular response to that?
Oh, I think that's a valid point. I think that's part of that COVID, that, that, uh, that, that section on closing schools. I think uh, trying to put some more um, points around that um, and how we would, how, what our workflow would be uh, for that is important. So I, I made that note.
And Kate, it sounds like you're asking a question, but I've never, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, a question about larger community coordination?
I, I guess that's it. I mean, it certainly our touch point would be the public health department. Um, but well, I, I mean, I don't even know what my question is. It's a concern that I have that we're, and you know, I don't know that there's an answer, but I am concerned with twenty-two thousand students coming into town for uh, August twenty-second opening, which is like a week or two before we're talking about opening schools. So what do we do if there's a dramatic community uptick in, you know, October? I don't know.
Matt, did you want to add anything before I move on?
Oh, me? Uh, well, I think that um, it's not an if, it's a when. There will be an uptick uh, with having that number of students coming back and also all the staff that are associated with them and all the various people that are in support roles at UVA. Um, my sense from what I've been taking away from uh, the Virginia Department of Education weekly meetings that we've had is right now, the plan from the governor's office is to say, you know, at some point we're going to be in phase three and we don't have a phase four. It's phase three and then it's every man for yourself. And um, so school systems are going to be trying to figure this out. Uh, the, the role of the, of, of the governor's office in closing all the school systems in Virginia. I, I don't know how this sounds, but it wasn't about schools. It was about uh, flattening the infection curve so that uh, hospitals had time to catch up on uh, on the cases i- i- during a scenario where the federal government was was lacking in terms of providing testing and all the other things that, that we needed. So it was not about schools, it was about flattening the curve for Virginia. I think there's a lot of celebrating going on right now that the curve got flattened. And so it's like, okay, so now you're going back to school, make up your plan. Our plans are not going to be approved by the Virginia Department of Education. They're, they're going to be read and they're going to provide feedback to us if they feel like uh, there's some aspect of uh, plan that we haven't covered. So it's going to be, it, you, you talk about challenges. Um, there's certainly all the technical challenges and all the pieces, I think our staff has done outstanding job of, of addressing. Then there's just going to be the part about the, the community in a, in a situation, again, very similar to where we were in March where there, there will be infections, there will be issues uh, presented with that. And how will we move forward? And I think our best bet is to continue to work very closely with the Thomas, Thomas Jefferson Health District. And, and work with them to do what's best for our students, our staff and our families. So that's, that's kind of my overarching look at it is that uh, we're now we're now, we're now holding the ball. Every school system in Virginia, all, all one hundred and thirty, uh, three of us are going our ways and we're going to try to uh, figure it out. That's kind of how the VDO, VDOE works uh, in terms of how they do things.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Matt, for those comments. Ellen, may I bring you off of mute?
Sure. Um, I, I don't really have anything to add other than I appreciated the structure of the planning guide. I thought that was very well thought out and uh, it, it made a overwhelming um, thought process. Um, it helped shape it very well.
Wonderful. I know the staff appreciates hearing that. Trudy, may I ask you to chime in?
Sure. Um, I uh, I think I a little bit better appreciate through this conversation some of the thought processes behind um, what is in there and what is not in the document. And I appreciate the complexity of sort of chicken and egg of like not knowing how many people are going to come back, but then it's hard to know because we don't, because they don't exactly know yet, because we don't exactly know yet what back looks like. So then they can't give us that data. So I, I can appreciate that that's sort of tautological, I guess. So um, I, I, all that is to say that I understand that this is very difficult work. Um, I appreciate being able to have these conversations and to continue having these conversations. And I really look forward to um, knowing more when there is more to know.
Thank you. Katrina?
Yeah, um, I would just uh, echo saying thank you to everyone for, for such a comprehensive document to look at and kind of think about and, and summarizing all the work that you guys have been doing. The other thing is, since we've been, we've been pointing, I know it's a scary time and there's, and there's a lot that's um, not ideal. And I think I hopefully make clear that for me, an emphasis is, is making sure that we're not letting our students end up with this giant gap that they can't overcome later in their life when this is hopefully over and gone. Um, but I do want to end on a positive note and say there's a lot of good things that I think can come out of this in terms of um, exploring online learning, offering new options and new ways to uh, for our kids to access information. And so um, while this is not ideal in, by any sense of the word, um, I think it's, it's, it's neat, I guess. No, that's the wrong word. It's, it's at least one little silver lining is that hopefully um, we'll have more options for our students when this is done. I'm really butchering this. I hope nobody's watching at home.
I'm going to tease you later, Katrina. It's going to happen.
In my head, it made so much sense, but then it's like, because it's such a horrible situation, you, you can't ever say anything positive about it. But um, online But online learning is a is a growing component. And maybe the one silver lining is that in the end, we'll know a lot more about online learning. That is basically the only silver lining.
Right on, right on.
Now, I do have a comment.
Oh, okay.
I just want to say, I suspect that CSO is a lot less fun than it sounds.
And just to clarify for anyone in the public, CSO is Ms. Collins.
It is. CSO is a platform that allows us to look and think through student work. It was developed more as a portfolio system. What it also allows though is apps and some things to be put in that that helps students manage some of their learning. It provides teachers an opportunity to give feedback and it has a very strong communication platform for parents. And that's the part we were most interested in.
Wonderful.
See, that's 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 misleading. CSO sounds fun. It's kind of like giving peas for dessert. It's like, well, it's still vegetables.
It's kind of like my understanding of board retreats when I went to my first one and thought it was like us having brunch at a golf course. And then I realized it's actually just additional time to do work. That is what.
Wow, okay.
Absolutely.
Allison, you're great.
No, 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 no. It's okay, it's okay. You don't know what kind of brunch I have planned to mail to your house next week. Anything is possible. I'm making a note right now, Ms. Carlson. Mr. Page, Graham, all of you have become friends to me. So I apologize if calling you by first name has been wrong, but Graham, Mr. Page.
No problem, Allison. All right, and Dave and Katrina's statements before this are sort of hard act hard X to follow. But maybe the main thing that I want to say is thanks to our staff and all of the people in those committees who worked to put this together, this plan together, because it had to be a tremendous task. And I think that we can see that we still have a whole lot of work that needs to be done. And among those things would be getting all of this information out to our parents and people within the community. So again, just mainly thanks to the staff and everyone who worked on the plan.
Thank you. Jono, I'll give you some closing comments and then we'll talk a little bit about our adjustment to the agenda.
Okay, I think I think Dr. Haas is going to be involved with that. It's going to be going over to him. I would like to say how impressed I've been since March 13th with the deliberative process and processes that the school division, the cabinet, has gone through to adjust to different circumstances that have been thrust upon them, thrust upon our students, thrust upon our teachers and the entire community. And and this really came to my attention when the decision was made to let's plan on what's going to happen for the summer first. And then we'll work on what's going to happen for the fall. Well, for the summer got taken care of. And this is the first draft that we've received about what's looking to be done for the fall. And it's certainly not the last stage. It is probably not the last report, you know, that's going to be going to be put forward on this because there are a lot of other issues that were brought up today. And I'd like to thank everybody for their participation in this and for bringing up issues that that need to be addressed before the the children come back to school. And but it's it's gone gone about it in a deliberative manner. And and as opposed to just, you know, saying, well, what's next? We don't know. That's not the way this this cabinet works. And so I give credit to Dr. Haas for his leadership on it. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody involved for great work. Putting this together for great work, speaking about it today. And I think this is time well spent.
Thank you. Dr. Haas, I know that we're going to talk a little bit about an adjustment to the agenda now due to some issues out of our control.
Yeah, so I think we we had on the agenda today to talk about the School Resource Officer Program. Without Dr. King here, who really owns that program in partnership with the police, it's going to be difficult to do that and will cause a lot of, you know, secondhand reporting back to him what was what what board members wanted to look at. But I I mean, I think that since it's on the agenda, I mean, my opinion is that we should take some time, maybe take a break and then come back and allow each board member two or three minutes just to talk about your views on having school resource officers so that they can all be made public. And then you, after going around each person talking about it, then you can come back and revisit what you said based on what you heard. It would certainly, I think that's an opportunity to do that.
Yep. So what I'd like to suggest is we'll take a break. We'll come back and I'll I'll help us with timing it. So we'll take about two minutes and 30 seconds, give or take. I'll kind of wave my hand when it's time for you to be able to say whatever are your statements, not just about the SRO process. But also, we're going to very hopefully talk about it next Friday. Some of that depends on Dr. King's availability. But one of the things I'd like you to think about while we take this break is how would you like to frame up the discussion? I know that we have a survey going out to students and some other inputs and things that have been part of it. So your comments can both cover what you'd like to say to each other and to the public right now, but then also any guidance you'd like to give us publicly about how we frame it up when we are able to have Dr. King back with us.
And if I might, if I might, then when we get done with that, we can segue into the PD session that we would have had next week.
Well, a portion of it, yeah. That's what I've got planned, a portion of it. So it'll depend on the time that we have left and to let the public know at the point at which that happens, we will move into a session for the board to do professional development and some of their own training. And.
And that and that will still be publicly viewable. So we'll not, we will not go into a closed session for that. That would still be where the public can see it happening.
Okay.
I had a quick question. So when do we, I guess I'm a little worried about pushing this further down. I don't I don't even know. I missed the first two minutes of the meeting. So I don't know what's going on with Nick. I do know that you said he was hospitalized. I know that Judy missed several meetings. So I guess, is this like we're pushing it down a month? Are we just giving extra time for an alternative staff member to get up to speed?
My hope is that Nick will be back with us next week so that he can be the person who, I mean, he's the one who knows this program inside and out. And with no disrespect to any other member of staff. And, you know, I I think it's a value to have him here. And so I I agree with what Dr. Haas is saying in terms of comments for now. This this is, I think there has to be some fluidity in this. And unfortunately, this is this is one of those fluid moments.
Yeah, I I I agree. I don't I don't want to proceed without having impact from Nick. I mean, Dr. King is is the guy when it comes to this. It doesn't mean if if it turns out he's just not going to be available, which I hope to God and pray to God is not the case, then obviously we need to move on. But in the absence of him, with the assumption that he can be there next Friday, I I agree.
It's about 48 hours old, what we know. So we will be in touch about exactly what's happening. That's what was announced yesterday in the meeting that I observed. So we will, but I I hear you, Ms. Carlson. We will make sure that it does not drop away for too long, but.
And and before we lose it, to the extent that Dr. King hears this, we love you, my friend, and we hope you're getting better.
Okay, so are we going to take a short break and then come back?
So if everyone could set their timers to 10 minutes, we're going to take a 10 minute break, come back, and you will have about two minutes and 30 seconds to say anything that you'd like to about the SRO and especially that will help frame up the discussion about it when we do get Dr. King back. Okay, is everyone and before we go, is everyone good with that plan? Okay. All right, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Hi, since when is PD? No, that's okay. But since when is PD public? It's never been public in the history that I've ever done this.
That is what.
Hey, Allison, you're on and we can hear you.
All right, 10 minutes passes quickly, doesn't it?
Does.
I enjoy your glasses, Kate.
Thank you. They are for blue for computer glare.
They're lovely as well.
Whatever, blue light computer glare glasses, yes.
All right. I'm gonna wait until I'm sure I've got Ellen and Katrina back. I see you and your giraffe.
Not that I'm speaking from experience, Katrina, but if at when you end up taking that giraffe to Goodwill while riding in a car or truck, people will stare.
I love this giraffe.
I'm not saying that that happened to me.
Why would that giraffe ever leave her home? I don't understand. I don't know the story of it, but I don't understand why it would ever leave.
She likes to pretend it's her children's giraffe, but it's really hers.
It was a gift when I had my first son. It was a surprise gift from my mother-in-law, and it did arrive on a truck, and it was hilarious. And I'm the one that's encouraged us to put it right in our entryway, because if you have a 10-foot giraffe.
You should show it. I agree.
I mean, I think we're in total agreement.
It was scary to my kids in their rooms.
All right, I believe I have everyone back. Is there anything we need to do to call us back formally? Or am I allowed to just start?
You go right ahead.
Okay, so first of all, thanks to everyone for the fluidity in what we're doing here. We touched base during the break, and because of what we're learning about wanting to wait until we have Dr. King to be with us, we are going to go ahead and proceed with what I suggested about each of you having a chance to give your comments about the SRO and also any instruction to the staff and others for how to frame up the strategic nature of the conversation. But the PD that I had planned for us was really an opportunity to talk with you all such that you, to the extent that you're open to this, to talk with you a little bit about how you're doing, how you're functioning during this time, how you feel about how things are working for you as a school board member. And so when we do that, when we talk about your personal lives, we are actually permitted to go into a professional development team building situation. And so at the point at which we shift into that, we will go off the public livestream because you two have protections when discussing your personal lives and sort of how you're doing during this time. So we will do that, and then we will also consider additional PD next week, depending on how we have to adjust next week's schedule to talk about some of the other items that we discussed earlier in today's meeting. So thanks to everyone for flexing with us on this. I had to check that with Ross and Jono during the break. Ross, did I get that properly, please?
Yeah, that's, Ms. Lenny, that was fine. Perfectly, perfectly appropriate under the law.
Oh, thank you. It's always appropriate, good, when your attorney says that was fine, Ms. Lenny. So I appreciate that. Okay, does any school board member have any question about that adjustment plan? Okay, then. So what I'd like to do is start now, as I mentioned, I will be timing you and just kind of, I'll wave my hand when we're around the two-minute mark, just to let you know. And you may not need that much, but the two main focuses are just sort of, what are your thoughts right now about SRO? And also what you want to ask of us in terms of putting together an agenda that allows us to dive into that topic with Dr. King. So I'll just ask for a volunteer who'd like to go first, and I'll be looking at my clock here. Thank you. Judy, I saw your hand first, so I'll let you go.
I'm always happy to. Firstly, I do want to say, like, I really obviously hope that Dr. King gets well soon and is able to join us, and I understand this difference in our agenda today, but I do want to register my frustration that what was a two-hour discussion was changed to two and a half minutes with just 10 minutes of notice. And it really goes to a feeling that I have about our meetings in general, in which we are often surprised with detailed information that I personally would like more time to process and give thoughtful feedback on. So, and I know that we will discuss our meetings in PD at some point, so I'll have comments then. Secondly, where I am right now, I really urge us as a board to not look at our county as somehow immune to nationwide issues. I've gotten that feedback from a couple of folks, and I recognize that we prioritize being an anti-racist division, and I applaud us for that, but we do still have the same stubborn outcome gaps as do other divisions. And as you saw also in the data that I sent last night, we still have the same types of issues with placing police where there are more lock-and-bound students. Daily Progress has reported that we have the same types of disproportionate minority contact in Elmore County as do other municipalities. So I really urge us not to disregard nationwide research as something that we think just doesn't apply to us. Thirdly, I really appreciate the speed with which the staff has been able to bring together a review, but I again caution us on mistaking a lack of problems in a survey over the summer to meaning a lack of issues. And Mr. Ober mentioned this before. So I'm also curious, because I did not catch this yesterday, about how this stopped to be an independent review. It still feels like we're looking from the inside, and that's always hard to judge. So that's what I got.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Who would like to go next? Kate?
I think many of you know that I've been looking at the SROs for the past few years and working to try to understand how we are doing in the county. Jono and I attended a educational law conference four years ago, about the same time there were some Department of Justice and other reports about disturbing reports about how SROs were implementing discipline and perhaps a disproportionate application of that discipline to some of our minority students. I did meet, and Jono and I met, but I met also with Matt and multiple members of our staff to look at what our MOU looked like. And I have to say, it is, it didn't look very good to me four years ago. It was not very specific about what we wanted to accomplish. Having said that, we've gone now to superintendents, to police chiefs, to lawyers. We have a very good SRO contract, but that does not, or draft MOU, that doesn't answer the fundamental, the foundational question of whether the SRO or what, what rules. I think it's very easy to get caught up in the visible presence of the police in the schools, and I'm concerned with that as well, and they're encroaching in the areas of discipline, but there are layers of connectivity between the schools and the police department that are not, don't require that. And I would just have us look thoughtfully at how we address those various levels of function.
Just to be clear, you still had 20 seconds.
Oh, you were waving at me, like, oh, wait a minute. No, it's good. No, it's good. Looking forward to the data, as imperfect as it may be, so we can make a better informed decision about how we address the various functions.
Great. To be clear, I'm waving at the two-minute mark.
Okay, okay.
And then I'm probably, then I'm doing some sort of dance at the two-minute and 30-second mark, which I'm sure everyone's thrilled about that, so stay tuned. Katrina?
I apologize for the noise in the background. I am, I do childcare on Fridays. That's how we're doing.
I like the noise in the background. It's a healthy sign.
So I would echo the frustration that Judy shared in that it is rough. I was expecting a more robust, longer conversation. I certainly didn't prepare a statement, a two-minute statement that's going to encapsulate all my views. But to try, now that I have about two minutes left, speaking to Kate, I know we have put work into our MOU. The piece that's missing for me is the accountability piece. No matter how much we rework our MOU and say things that sound good and what we want to accomplish, we're not checking if that's what we're accomplishing. Something that comes to mind is the DARE program, which I went through as a kid, and maybe some of you did as well. And then when they actually looked at it 10 years later, they found out it was increasing drug use, because we were going into our middle schools and talking about the effects of drugs. And so, and kids were like, oh, that sounds interesting. Let me give it a try. And so with, with having officers in our school, it's something that is, that we spend money on, that we've put a lot of thought into, and we're not having that last piece of just what is the actual effect? And personally, I don't have the data in front of me yet, but my inclination is to think that the program needs to be reworked, re-envisioned, or eliminated if it's not working. I've had people write in that said SROs don't break up fights unless they happen to be right there when it's happening. It's still teachers who are doing it. They don't stop school shootings. They, if they're serving an investigative role, which seems to be what I'm imagining they are, then we still are capable of calling the police and having them come. So I just think it's something that's, that is ripe for review, and to be perfectly transparent and honest, I think there's been some frustration because I think a feeling is coming across that, that we're not going to be giving it a truly from the ground, grounds-up, an unbiased kind of review. It's seeming like we're sort of painting, painting a picture of, it's seeming based on our statement and the things that are being said, that we're kind of lining ourselves up, teeing ourselves up for the SROs are okay, when really I think it's totally okay to re-envision, and there could be other things we do. There don't necessarily have to be police in our schools. They could be in a central office. They can be reduced. We could secure, there's just so many options, and I just want to make sure that we're all coming with a blank piece of paper when we go through this review of the program, and it hasn't necessarily felt like that to me.
You prevented the dance, Katrina, like seven seconds, and I would have, okay. Who would like to go next? Ms. Osborne?
So I also wasn't prepared to summarize all my thoughts on this in two minutes, but a couple of things. Object to having a police officer being a quote "school official" and all of that entails. I think that the police department can be useful in helping us evaluate buildings and procedures and physical safety issues. But again, that doesn't require a police officer to having a continued presence on school property. I think there may be occasions where it's appropriate to invite someone from the police department onsite for educational function, and that's fine. I would like an independent review of our program, as long as it can be concluded in time for the next school year. And I was assuming that it would be a statistical review and not an anecdotal one requiring retelling of personal experiences, because I don't think it's right to ask people to relive trauma. I've done a little bit of academic research on SRO programs, and I've not found instances where they, those programs do what everybody assumes that they're doing. And that's just not, here, read this article kind of thing, you know, these are real studies. So I think also that our continued language around quote "amending the MOU" is not helpful, because the MOU starts, has a starting point of officers onsite. And I think we just need to reimagine our relationship with the police department and what that looks like.
Thank you. Mr. Ober, could I call on you?
Yeah, I mean, I, don't start my timer yet.
Would you like me to call on someone else?
No, that's okay. I think that there are a couple of things that I think, that I think we need to address. Saying that police officers should not be in campus is not derogatory towards police officers. There are many professionals who are on campus who I would say don't need to be on campus, and they don't need a permanent presence there. I think we absolutely have to have a relationship with the fire department, but we don't have fire personnel onsite all the time. We have to have frequently physicians, paramedics, but we don't have those onsite all the time. You know, if there's an emergency, if a child breaks his arm, which is much more likely than something like a school shooting, we call the paramedics, and we get, we get emergency treatment there. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's a binary issue that, hey, look, we, you know, we either have them onsite or we don't have a relationship. I don't think that that's, that's valid. I, I, I got a very, kind of upsetting email from a parent yesterday evening, who basically said, look, you know, you're endangering our children, and you don't care about our children, and if there's a shooting, then it's your responsibility. And first of all, I don't think that SROs have been shown to eliminate shootings. I just don't. There's no evidence of that. But I think it is our responsibility, to the extent that our children are suffering, and if you don't like the term violence or microaggressions, what have you, if our children are, any of our children are suffering anxiety or upsetness because one of our police officers are there, that is our responsibility. I mean, that's, that's our decision. And so I think we have to, we have to be very, very concerned about that. I'm getting waved at. Do the dance. I'm not going to stop till you do the dance. I, my gut instinct is that we don't need police officers in the building, but I, if I'm wrong, I can be educated opposite. It's just where I am at this point.
Yes, sir. You finished before the time for the dance. Thank you, Mr. Ober. I appreciate it. Mr. Page?
Like everybody else has said, I've been sort of torn too with all of the information we've received. We've received a whole lot of emails saying that the SROs have to go. We've received a whole lot of emails that have said that they have to stay. And one thing that really concerned me, I guess, with the program is when a lot of those emails cited the fact that a whole lot of our black and brown kids are just traumatized by the presence of the cops in the schools. And I can sort of see that in a way because maybe of some personal experience that some of those kids might have had, or even some of the things that they might be witnessing on the news, especially within, say, the last two or three months. or even some of the things that they might be witnessing on the news, especially within, say, the last two or three weeks. But at the same time, the main thing that I've been concerned about is what do we have to do in order to alleviate that situation? I think as a school board, we can't just say that we understand this is how the kids feel, and there's nothing that we can do about it. But I think if we have, uh, in the MOU with the, uh, with the county police, if we have some type of statement saying that your main function is to come in and build a really good relationship with our students, so that our students will be able to see that not all cops are bad. And at the same time, we can't just be relying on the school, uh, cops and school board to do it. After seeing the demonstrations that have occurred like throughout the world, we also have to have some way of letting people know that we need to sort of make sure that any cop who is racist or any cop who is performing a crime, that those cops have to go. And if we are working with our students to let them know that not all cops are bad, and at the same time, in our society, trying to make sure that we are doing something to remove those bad cops, I think we'd be doing then a good job for our kids. We'd be letting them know that not all cops are bad, and that as they move forward in life, they'd be able to sort of recognize that. I don't think that we can let them leave our school system thinking that all cops are bad. And that might be a really hard thing to do, but that's one thing that I think we have to do. And also, in relationship to the survey, are we going to get to that now? Are we going to get to that later? Because I see your hands are going up, but.
I, I believe that, I mean, you, you can say a few more things, but the survey, the intent is to talk about that in depth next week.
Well, actually, uh, we have, we have a draft of it, so I mean, we, I'd like to get feedback from the board today on it, so that we're not waiting till week to administer it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. Let me let Graham finish, and then Graham, we'll come back to the survey. And I, I'd also like to let Jono have his time, and then we'll, we'll segue back over to the survey.
Okay, so moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jono? You need to come off mute, Jono.
Thank you. I feel very strongly about the fact that we have an opportunity, uh, and this is in light of what many people talked about, uh, and going back to what Kate and I have been talking about for the last three or four years, of setting up a new model for our relationship with the, uh, with the school, uh, with the police department. And I'm, I, you know, one of the big issues for me is educational disruption, the environment of, uh, environmental disruption for students who are negatively, uh, feel negatively about us, uh, an officer being present at school. I'm totally fine with that removal. And, uh, I do know that we're going to need to have some sort of a relationship with the police department. We have football games that they're at, there are other events that, that they, they are at. But we can do a new model, and that's very much in our hands to do. So, and, and that gets into independent reviews, you know, that is in our hands to ultimately decide. And, uh, so I, I, and I, I think we should be going down that path. Accountability is, is one that, that I believe in too. And, and while there are, there is a lot of good content in the current MOU, the draft MOU, there's a lot that can be taken out if they're no longer on campus. There are a lot of things that could be molded in that. And, uh, but we've got to have some sort of a working relationship with them, and that is really going to include an, an MOU. Um, we have to get the data, uh, and, uh, not only from the schools, but, uh, from other sources as well, so we can make an informed decision. And, uh, and I do encourage all of us to come in with an open mind on it. But, you know, as, as I've said to a lot of people in responding to the gazillion emails that I've responded to, um, my goal is to set up a new model that can hopefully be in place before the new school year.
So before I, uh, transition us into talking about the survey, I do want to say, it was my best decision, and it was my decision in the moment to ask you all to say something. I didn't mean to make it a, a formal statement, so I apologize if I put you in a bad spot as I'm trying to figure out how to help us sort of flex during this. I, it's just important to me to own that that was my call. Um, I do think, I have good news from Matt. Uh, you may have seen, uh, that Dr. Nick King is, is doing better. Uh, we have heard back, and so that's the most wonderful news of all. My hope is, of course, this is recorded. What you all have just shared may help to frame, and we have time in the coming days to, um, really make sure we get the agenda just right for next Friday on this topic. So, thank you. Um, I think Nick being able to hear everything that you've said, and the staff as well, and me as your facilitator will help me to design something that I hope meets everyone's needs next Friday. Okay? So, thank you for your patience with me. Dr. Haas, we do want to get input on the survey, correct?
Sure, and, um, I'll just say this. I mean, we were prepared to make a presentation to the board about this. Uh, Jamie Gelner is attendance at this meeting, and, um, so we were prepared to do that. I have to say, as the superintendent, one thing I would say is that I, I don't know how this sounds, but we're not here to drag our feet or to slow things down when the board wants to act. I would, I would hope that, uh, as a school board, you would expect me, uh, to raise my hand sometimes and say, would you mind if we please provided, um, information for you so that you could study a situation before, uh, you make a decision about it? So, um, I don't know what else to say, except I apologize for, um, just wanting to provide data, uh, so that there can be an informed decision about something that, um, could potentially be important. That's, that's my job. If I jumped right in with everyone and said, let's call vote tonight, I, I would think that you might think I wasn't doing my job. So I, I feel like I need to say that. We're in a retreat. So my point of view is that I, I feel like I'm simply doing my job by offering a perspective for the board. I would say that at any given time, any one of you wants to make a motion about an issue, you're certainly welcome to do that. Um, I'm not the chair of the board, but I would say anybody can make a motion. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you don't. I was asked in the meeting, uh, before last, what my perspective was, and I simply offered it. I'm an administrator. That's what I do. I administer. So at this point, uh, I am going to turn things over to Jamie Gelner. Um, Christine Thompson has, uh, uh, the survey that she can pull up and share on her screen so that you can see it. Might take a second, though.
Matt, is this the, the survey that's going out to the students?
Uh, we'd like to. We'd like to be able to send it tomorrow, so it'd be good to get some feedback on it. We were prepared to do this. I, that's all I can say is, um,
Can you guys see that okay?
Yeah.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, good.
Hi, good morning. I am here. Um, here's a very rough draft. We've also already got this loaded up into K-12 Insight. Um, so if there's anything that you see that you want to delete or add, please let me know. And also, if you're feeling that you don't want us to send it, please let me know that as well. We were planning on sending it out this afternoon.
Okay, Jamie, um, I have one thing. To me, in order to find out whether a program is successful, we really need to be accountable. And when I look at, um, item number five, question number five, that includes to me four different things that all are equally important. So I don't want to see them, um, like lumped together into one question, uh, where it says, uh, each of those phrases, I think, should be a separate item that the student or whoever who the participant is in the, uh, survey gets to agree on. So the first one would be, do they promote a positive school environment? Then each one after that, each one of those free, uh, phrases would be a separate item. So we'd be turning number five into four separate items rather than just one, because to me, each one is really important. And we need to make sure that we are receiving information about each one of those aspects, not just together as a lump.
I thought also that, I agree, Graham, and I also think it should, I don't know that I would phrase it is there too, because that, that goes to the purpose. I would, I would say if I, you know, it, 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 it would be more effective to say that I agree that they do.
Yeah, okay.
Because I, I fully believe that they're there to promote a positive school environment, but I can't, I can't say whether I agree that they do or not. You know what I'm saying? So I would, I would rephrase that.
Yes, we'll make those all into statements.
Right, so it'll be four separate statements. Okay.
Hey, Jamie, Jamie, I can't see, uh, under eight. Is there a nine? Thank you.
And, uh, number six, the options, um, seem odd. Uh, never seldom or occasionally often. It's, I would say either that, use those four or, or five, whatever. Those are kind of broad, general timeframes, and then you go to the very specific options of once a month. I would either choose the specifics, once a month, once a week, or every day, or the general, never seldom occasionally. I think all of those options are kind of confusing to have in one place. Because, I mean, what do you consider occasionally? Is that once a week? You know?
Yes, I put both on there, and Kristin and I put in the second option, never, about once a month, about once a week, almost every day. So that's the one you prefer?
I would, either the group of between never and often, or the group of options between once a month and almost every day, or whatever that is, or those are just two kinds of ways of describing time, and I would pick one of those. Yeah.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna pick one of those, yes.
One thought in here is, as I was saying a little bit earlier, the environmental disruption or the disruption to my studies, uh, you know, is, is a big issue for me. And if somehow, uh, I'm, because I'm not quite reading that in here, if there could be something, Jamie, that, that talks about, uh, you know, do I get distracted? Uh, with the pres, does it, do they distract me from my school work? Can they distract me from, you know, we can go down a lot of paths with that.
Sure, we can add something like that. Does the presence of the school, school resource officer distract you from your school work? Something along those lines?
Something along those lines.
I, I would, I would make it, and I don't want to micromanage it too much, but it, it seems to me that it's not. My concern is that that, that makes it seem like an, an, an all-or-nothing thing. And I think sometimes it's going to be a once-in-a-rare thing, but if it has happened, I think it's important to know it. You know what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm articulating that well. It doesn't, every time I see the SRO, it upsets me, but it hasn't been to me at all.
I'm with you, Judy. Have you ever been distracted?
Yep, I like that. Okay, you're smarter than me.
I mean, I appreciate you saying that, Dave. Thanks.
This is, uh, off of the survey, so sorry for interrupting someone, but, uh, what conversations are you guys having with principals? Because I do value their input in terms of managing, um, the schools. So how are you doing those conversations?
Uh, that would be something only Nick knows at this point, as, as he's the one that's doing that.
I'd, I'd like to ask something in, in, in reference to 10. It, it's sort of, it, it, have a friend interact with an officer in the past year, yes or no? If yes, was it positive or negative interaction, fine. If negative, please describe why it was a negative experience. I, I think you should put in, I, I think we should put in there something to the effect of, if you feel comfortable, please explain. Does that seem, does that seem fair? Because otherwise, it just seems, sort of seems like they may not want to, that, I may not say it's a negative because I don't want to explain why it was negative. If I think that I'm required to do so. Does that make sense?
Sure, and I was going to ask you about that one, based on comments that were made earlier about, um, maybe, uh, re-traumatizing someone, if we wanted to include the question, or maybe reframe it. Um, but we can add that if you feel comfortable.
Yeah, I guess also, along those lines, um, often there are things that, you know, we don't process traumas, and we don't process that quickly. So I am curious about the past year component of it. Um, I wonder if we can take a timeline off of that.
Yeah, it may not, it may not have been in the past year. It might have been five years ago, but I'm still traumatized by it. Or I still feel good about it.
Um, okay, well, we'll take these comments, and our plan was to, um, we're working with Phil and Jennifer Butler to, um, craft an introduction to frame the survey for the students and the parents. And our plan was to send this out this afternoon and close it, um, close the business next Wednesday, so that you would have some more information for next week.
Is there, um, a possibility for us to see the framing? Um, for me, anonymity is going to be really important. And even then, you can't guarantee that people feel sufficiently anonymized, but I just want to make sure that we are at least communicating that part of it.
Um, if you all would prefer, we could have, uh, the school board chair work with Phil Jeramito to draft the, uh, opening to the survey, so that it's coming directly from the school board and not from staff.
I guess I don't have enough experience with, um, speaking with our students as a school board to know what effect, if any, that might have on how they feel about telling us their experiences.
I would just throw in that if we are going to put a statement in the front, that Judy should be, Judy, I'm just throwing in there, should be involved as a part of our communications department, just so that there's at least two eyes on it. If we take, I'm fine with it coming from the division, Matt, so.
And I'm happy to be helpful in any way possible.
I realize it's not practical and we can't do it, but it would be really nice if it came from the teachers. You know, I think, I think you're much more likely to be responsive and honest with somebody that you actually have a relationship with than from the unseen entity school board. That's an interesting perspective. I kind of like that, too.
Oh, I do have one, um, and so could we have a question about there being any kind of disparate treatment? I don't know how you would word that, but maybe, I don't know, something like, do you think students are treated differently by the SRO? I mean, that's one of the things we're worried about, is kind of the discretionary, um, power that an SRO has in the school.
It could be a statement that you agree with. Statement, a statement, the SRO treats all children equally. Agree, disagree, neutral.
Because it doesn't even have to be, it doesn't have to be along any lines. My fear is, just like when I was a teacher, I, I'm ashamed to admit it, but you know, there's kids that you start thinking like, this is the kid that causes trouble, and this is my perfect child. That's a fear.
As a kid who was sometimes categorized in the group of, it's probably Oberg's fault, I sympathize with that.
I wouldn't be in favor of sending this from the teachers because the teachers haven't had any input into putting this together. And I'm afraid that that would sort of be a negative impact if we send something to the kids. And, uh, then later on, and we are saying it's coming from teachers, but then later on, people find out that it's not coming from the teachers. I think that would sort of destroy our credibility. So I think it either should be coming from staff or from the school board.
Could we have the principal send it, or maybe the guidance counselor, Graham? I'm just concerned that, I'm just. I'm just concerned that, I'm just, I mean, for, I don't think a lot of our parents know who the heck we are. But I go out on a limb and say probably 95% of our students don't know who we are. Jono sends an email. My child may know who Jono is, and his child's friends will know who he is. But for a lot of our students, that's just, that's just a random, I mean, it's a random thing, and, and I don't know that, I don't know that you get the best, the best honest response to somebody. Because I mean, I, and I know, if, if I get a random question on a poll, my response might be very different than it would be if one of you guys asked me the same exact question.
Right.
The relationship we have, I'm going to be more honest. I just, I, I get the impression sometimes the, 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 and I'm not saying there's a better way to do it, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying, I think there's sometimes that, that when we get division questions and stuff like that, to the, to the kids, it's so esoteric that they don't, I mean, it's sort of like the, the nameless entity.
Well, just point out, too, that we're going to face some challenges, being that the school year has ended. So we will send the, you know, the email through our Blackboard messaging system, and we're going to do the phone call to the parents, asking them to have their students take the survey. But we did get some pretty good responses in our last survey that went out. There are about 800 student responses.
I will say that all these issues are part of the reason that, at the end of the meeting, whenever it was that we met, I suggested that we did not do a survey, because I, I really feel like, as Ellen said, as people have said, A, it's not great to ask people to talk about traumas, and B, it's an impersonal way to do it. So I, I just, I will be interested to see what the results are, but I also know that I, I would be hard pressed to answer a question, answer questions like these if I were to.
So I guess I would ask, what's the pleasure of the board? There's other ways that our staff could spend their time right now, working on things, getting ready to go back to school. So if there's a sense on the board, or if someone wants to make a decision about what you would prefer for us to do, please let us know today.
I don't, I mean, I'm not, we are going to get a skewed response, I would think. This issue is so highly visible. Surveys or quest, surveys are useful when you can get a broad distribution of feedback. We don't have any way of ensuring that we get that, and then I'm not sure what we will do with the results. I mean, I, I'm not sure it would add much to our discussion, frankly.
Is there a motion before you all discuss this?
Matt, in what way do you make a mo, what do you mean, like a motion not to do this?
To, to do it or not do it. That way you could have a discussion that would lead to a decision to give us direction. In fact, if you would prefer to not do any of this, again, as you could see from the report you received earlier, we've got a lot of things that we're working on right now, and if the board would prefer to make a motion to just simply remove the school resource officers from our schools, and not have their presence there, and direct us to draft a new MOU that redefines the relationship with the police, I'm, I would be glad to receive direction from the board today.
Matt, personally, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that without talking to Nick.
Right. And I would like to see the result of a survey. It might be skewed, like we are saying, but still, I'd like to receive some local data to make sure that, well, at least just to give me a feel of what is happening within the county. It might be true that what we are seeing within the county would be the same as we are seeing everywhere else. But I really would like to have some local data before I would make a decision about this. So I really would be in favor of the survey. Is that a motion? I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now it's open for discussion, which we've already kind of discussed it. I'm, I am okay. I am, I, I don't necessarily care if we have the survey or not. I do think it could provide some interesting information. I also think it could be something we have to disregard or take with a grain of salt, because obviously we're not, it's, you know, it's quick, and who knows really what it's going to say. It's probably going to be skewed in some way or another, as is, as are most data points. I am in support of getting more data. I've said that from the beginning. I don't need to make a decision right now to, to take, take everyone out. I guess I want to hear, oops. Did I go, oh, my screen messed up. So I guess I'm looking forward to hearing from Nick. I'm looking forward to hearing the conversations with the principals. And I guess I'm a little bit confused, Matt, about what you're asking, because I, I hope that what is on the table is re, is re-envisioning our MOU. I guess I'm just confused about the way that we're going about this.
I am too, at, at this point.
So we have a motion on the table, and I would say in terms of discussion that I, I too would very much like to hear the feedback from the principals, because they're the feet on the street. I'd like to hear from Nick. And, you know, in, in some ways, I'd like to hear from parents, too. We're getting a lot of, of feedback from the community. I'm not, I, I don't, I genuinely don't know how many of those are, are parents, and how many are not. But I, I think that starting with the kids is a, a good place to start. I'm encouraged that Nick, that Nick is feeling better, and that we will hopefully have him with us next week. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I, I just, I, I don't know if this is a relevant topic. I think it is. I, I'd also like to add that I'd like to, I'd like to hear what our superintendent, and I'm not asking him to say anything now. But, you know, we're, we're saying what, and I do want to talk to Nick, and I do want to hear about from our parents. I do want to hear from principals, but I also would look for a direction from Dr. Haas and what he thinks we should do. And I'm, man, I'm not trying to put you on the spot now. You don't have to answer now, but that's something I would like input on.
I honestly, I think I've already been pretty clear about what I think we would like to do as a staff, which is to do our best, to the best of our ability, study a critical issue and provide data to the board prior to making what I consider to be a pretty critical decision. That's, that's what I think. I detected from comments from board members earlier that there's a sense that we're, it's almost, I feel like an us against them. There, that we are somehow trying to slow it down, as if I or my staff have some vested interest in keeping the police in the schools, and we're opposed to making a change. That is not the case. I think I've made it pretty clear, at least in emails to the board, that I'm very happy to shake up a paradigm that's existed in our schools for quite some time now. We, when I began my teaching career in 1990, there were no school resource, resource officers in our schools. I dare say that the majority of the school board, if not all school board members, went to schools with no school resource, resource officers in them. So that, that is a paradigm that's developed over time. I, in the emails I've received from the public, I've been keeping track of new, like, new thinking that I've been doing based on the feedback that I'm receiving, things that I hadn't really thought about. It's just become sort of like the wallpaper for me. I walk by it every day. I see it, it seems to be working. We concentrate more on having a good agreement and less on really what the outcomes are going to be, or what the impact's going to be. So honestly, I, I thought that we had made a good proposal to the board to put the brakes on for a meeting or two. We're not having school right now. We haven't had school buildings open for months, so. And we still won't have school for a couple of months. I didn't really see the absolute urgency to make a decision at the very same night that the issue was brought up. However, I, I, I honestly am a little bit confused right now as to what the desire of the board is. And I would like there to be motion and direction, very direct direction from the school board on what you would like us to do. As a board.
I think the motion that's on the table is, do we do the survey? I'm willing to vote on that.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Acuff? I don't, I don't, I vote no. I don't think the survey of the students adds much. Ms. Carlson?
I vote yes.
Ms. Lee?
Um. I was not ready to vote, but that's our job, so I will.
Pass.
I'll pass.
Pass.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
So moved.
Hold, hold on, you need to come back, you need to come back to Judy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, the, the motion passes. Are there any other motions that need to be made at this time?
Should, this is where I, I don't know if Matt needs further, needs further direction. I don't want to just revisit the existing MOU. I want to be presented to the board alternative options that include, or, that's it. That's what I'm confused about, Matt. I don't know if you're asking for us to keep the MOU and just keep moving forward, knowing that we can adjust it, or if we're going to be looking at new options before school starts.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting to keep the current MOU. What I'm, what I've, what I suggested yesterday was that Ross actually found a really pretty solid resolution that a board passed recently, that it's not an MOU, but it would certainly serve as a way for the board to structure and outline of what you want to see moving forward. And I, I have, I mean, I'm just reading the tea leaves here, and I have a general sense from what all of you are saying, is that, you know, regardless of what we find out, there's a strong desire, and, and I, there's a strong desire to not have a daily police presence in the school. So if, if in fact, that that's like, for example, that's what the board decides after looking at the data, then that would be the, one of the first parts of that resolution is, you know, here, moving forward, Alamo County Schools will not have a daily police presence in our schools with a school resource officer or any other officer of the law. Then outlining the different parts of a relationship that we could have moving forward with the Alamo County Police Department, that allows us to deal with first responding to situations that present themselves. I thought, I don't, I think it was Dave that said something earlier, where he said, you know, we need, occasionally we need an ambulance at the school, but we don't have paramedics at the school all day. And occasionally, we need, you know, different kinds of services from first responders that come to the schools, but they're not there all day. So it would be good just to, I think, lay out, how do we, how do we continue to do different things? It would mean, it would really just mean not starting from scratch all over again, and re-articulating a relationship, because there are some pieces to it. Like, here's, here's a piece that, that I think we're just going to have to figure out, is that we do share information with the police when there's an emergency. So for example, if they're communicating with, with a, a child online, or they're communicating with a child via phone that says they're going to kill themselves, we'll get a, we'll get a contact from the police, not me personally. But it'll go, go, come into us, and they'll say, we need to be able to find this student. This is the information that we have, so we can do a welfare check. And then we need to find the student for them, because it's, it's an emergency. So that would be something, it, it is spelled out in the agreement that we have with the police department, and that'll be something that we'll need to spell out in a relationship with a new MOU that we developed from scratch. So I don't, yeah, so that, that's, that's what I'm thinking, is I don't want to do the status quo. What we would do is use what we learn and, and start from scratch.
That's kind of what I said when I said that it's not a binary choice. It's not an all or nothing. If we make an all or nothing decision on anything, we're typically making a pretty big mistake. I think, you know, I, I, I agree with that approach, Dr. Haas.
So I mean, that.
Making faces, I apologize, my back hurts.
So again, you know, I'm, I don't think, again, you know, put me in my place, I'm, I'm fine with being put in my place. However, that's also something you can make a motion on today, and say, we, we do not want to have the kind of MOU that we currently have. We want to start from scratch, rebuild it. Any direction that you can give us moving forward, leaving this meeting, or even future meetings, if you want to think about it some more. I really love the concept of someone making a motion, and then someone seconding it, even if it's just worthy of a conversation, and you're not really interested in seconding it. And then just talk about it for a while, and then take a vote.
I move that we direct.
Isn't that, we're, aren't we getting a little bit more information, and we can prepare, be prepared to do that next week? I thought that was the whole point of next week's meeting.
I think that's what's holding us up a little bit, is that I think some of us were prepared to move that direction, but now we don't have the information, which we waited, because we needed the information, but the information is actually going to be next week. So at this point, it's kind of just.
I want to make a motion, point of order.
May I make a?
My motion supersedes conversation. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Oberg?
I move that we direct the administration to provide to the board in a timely manner, a proposed revision of the MOU, which eliminates daily presence of police officers in our school buildings.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thompson?
I have a discussion. I just want to clarify with the superintendent. Dr. Haas, does that meet what you need?
I think it definitely helps us narrow the scope of our work. Yes. Thank you. Okay, another point of discussion. Will the information that you said that Ross had be presented to us? If this bill, well, be presented to us next week?
I've already shared that with the chair.
And I will forward that along. I, I, I must admit that I have not seen it yet, but I will forward that along as soon as I see it.
Okay.
And I want to clarify the fact that we're directing a new MOU is not the final decision on the, on the thing. If we get, if we get an MOU, and it lays out as like, this is what we've done, but I really don't think you should sign it, we, we don't have to sign it, right? But this gives staff, I think, direction on what we want to accomplish, because it's not the role of the board, frankly, to figure out the moving parts. It's just not. We have staff, they're professionals, they know exactly what they're doing. We're giving them the opportunity to do their jobs.
But just a point of clarification, Mr. Oberg, so everyone is clear. What you, what I have sent to all of you is just a draft MOU. We don't have that MOU in, in place at this.
I, I know.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? Ms. Thompson?
I just want to make sure I have the motion correct. So we have a motion by Mr. Oberg that is directing administration to provide the school board in a timely manner, revision of the MOU that eliminates the daily presence of the school resource officers in our schools. Is that correct, Mr. Oberg?
Yes, ma'am.
And I do not, I did not catch who the second was.
Uh, Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, Dr. Acuff? Dr. Acuff?
Hey, you're, you were muted.
Am I not muted?
You're
No, you're not.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chairman Alcaro?
Yes. The motion passes. Dr. Haas, I, I hope that is very helpful to you.
Yes, thank you very much. That, that gives us very much narrows the, narrows the work that we're going to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Hello.
Hello.
So, um, I think, you know, a couple of things to say, some of the feedback that was given to me was that whatever was happening today was the hope was that Dr. King would be here. If he wasn't, that that's part of what happened here was wanting to be able, several of you gave that feedback. So my hope is going forward, both with the motions, the nature of the discussions and also the way you all shared some of your opinions, that that will help us to work really hard in the next seven days to frame the proper conversation for next Friday. And so as your facilitator, I commit to working with the board and to the staff to ensure that we have exactly the right agenda for next week and exactly the right material going into it early enough for you to be able to review it and have that discussion. So with that being said, my suggestion is, and we've always said that, you know, the last hour of today was going to be fluid based on how things shifted and changed. I, I would propose, but similar to Dr. Haas, I serve at the pleasure of the board. I would propose that we make sure we've given any additional feedback about this topic and anything else we'd like to discuss next Friday, but that we can save additional PD for next Friday, that we don't necessarily, that it's okay to end a retreat a bit early. But again, that's not my call to make. So if somebody would like to do something else for the next 30 minutes, I welcome the input.
I, I would throw out that, that the idea of adjourning early and perhaps extending next week's to 1:30 so that, because we're going to have the SROs, we have other subjects, but the, the content of, of PD, I think is, is good for all of us as a team and, and hopefully individually. And that would be what I would throw out.
I mean, if you're selfish standpoint, my back is starting to kill me, guys.
I did hear that, Mr. Oberg, that impacted my, my recommendations. So let me use these moments to just make absolutely certain we're in agreement about the high level of next Friday. My understanding is that we need to open with talking about the calendar that we have some business to do on that front. We would then segue into having this SRO conversation and from there move into professional development to look at our team building. That's my understanding of what's left on the schedule. Is there anyone else who hopes something else would happen next week? Or wants to add something now?
Brunch.
I, I, no, I, I would say, Allison, that I think there is one other item. I, I'm not recalling it at this point. I'll send it out to everybody when I think of that. I don't think it's something that's extensive.
Yeah, to be clear, there was the item potentially that today, if we had not had enough to discuss, that Patrick was going to have us talk about the strategic planning committees.
Yes.
But that was always something that Patrick said, if I, if we ended up having a more robust conversation, that I didn't need to get to that. So I believe it's that.
The Croze addition, Mr. Alcaro.
Thank you.
One more time?
The Croze addition, is that not on the agenda for, for next week?
The Croze, oh, 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 yes, that is right. Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. It was the follow-up on Croze that Rosalyn was going to be speaking about.
Yeah, we pulled it from the agenda yesterday.
Yes.
Thank you, nine point, yes, got it. Okay, I will work.
And thanks, Allison. This is Pat. Just to speak into the strategic plan stuff, we can do that totally offline too. I can get in touch with individual board members. So, so that does not need to be a top priority for next week, but if we get to it, you know, that, that'd be fine too.
Great, thank you. So with those inputs in mind, I'll work to design an appropriate agenda for next week with the appropriate stakeholders. Does anyone else have anything else though, that's important to them?
I just, I wanted to, I guess reiterate what Dave was saying earlier and obviously we won't do it now and my back is not great now either, but I do feel like we, it's intense what we're doing and I think that we really need that team building PD. So I'm hopeful that, I mean, and obviously we're all dealing with big issues as well that are timely and need to be dealt with, but I do hope that we have plenty of time for that.
I will work on that. And, and I mean, so much so that I think if we can substantively get into the agenda development, we can also figure out if all this can fit in. I just don't want to force myself or anyone else into committing to that right now. And I also do not want to make you all feel like I changed it up on you next Friday. Because I think in some ways I may hold some responsibility for that, but just trying to adjust to everyone's input and also your desire to have real time with Dr. King when we do have the substance of the SRO conversation. But thank you, Ms. Lee. I will work on that and have, and, and you'll know something quickly at the beginning of next week.
And if everything doesn't fit, I wonder if that's scheduling more time at another time.
Yeah, I think that's something we need to look at and I appreciate that. Okay, um, well, before we pause and, and take care of our backs, is there anything else before we close that anyone would like to offer or any feedback specifically about today? For me or that we take into consideration next week, as always, you're allowed to send me any kind of feedback about how I can do better for you and I will try, but if we could also discuss it now, if anyone has anything they'd like to clear up.
Allison, I just was getting ready to say something about you and that is, thank you very much for, for facilitating today and and it's interesting that some of the best facilitators I've ever known sometimes disappear for a while. And you disappeared for a little while in, in that last conversation we were having, which is kind of the sign of a true pro. I'd like to thank Dr. Haas and his entire team for, for, for what was presented today. It was absolutely worthwhile in every way, shape or form. And I want to thank every member of the board for candid comments, good decisions and moving us forward. So thank you all.
Hey, I, I want to say something too. And it's not in response to what John had just said, but being the chair and the vice chair of this, of this school board and any school board is a challenging, challenging thing. I mean, it, you get all the heat, you get none of the credit and you're put on the spot an awful lot. And John, I just want to tell you that I think you and Graham are a great team. And I really appreciate all that you guys do. I mean, there's tons of stuff you guys are doing behind the scenes. And it does, does not go noticed publicly, but it does not go unnoticed personally. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Oberg.
And did someone say that they would be responsible for having like a brunch delivered to each of our houses?
Yeah.
I distinctly heard that, yes.
Someone did.
Who was it? Katrina? Okay.
Last year we had barbecue.
Wow, I'm barely feeding the kids I'm watching. I was actually going to try to make PB and Js while this was going on because I'm like, I have to feed them.
Mr. Page, Mr. Page, I'm going to take that under advisement and have something important happen next Friday in that category.
Sounds really good.
I don't think I'm going to be around. That's scary. That's great. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else comments before we wrap up?
Okay. We are now adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
Everyone, thank you.